One minute, almost. Thirty seconds. It's two o'clock.
Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks today by Councilmember Vinnie Palermo?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We're here another Tuesday and we have a couple events that obviously mark the unofficial start to summer, although if you've been outside, obviously you have been, you wouldn't think that today. And one is graduations. We have a lot of them coming up, whether they're kindergartners who are done with their naps and peanut butter sandwiches, to college-age kids who are ready to venture out into the real world, so Godspeed to both of them. Then also Memorial Day. Memorial Day brings, we'll just say it's a different feeling for different people. And obviously, if you've served, you know what it truly means, and it's about those who risked it all for the ultimate sacrifice. So I challenge everybody here, if you don't have a flag, get one. And if you have one, fly it proudly. Thank you.
Thank you.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council does thank you all for being here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Before we begin our agenda today, there's a, I want to turn the floor over to our Council Vice President, Mr. Chris Jerem. He's going to introduce a very special person here to us today, and Mr. Vice President, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to take a minute to recognize and call to the dais for some important announcements and thank her and her team, Brenda Gustafson. Brenda is with FEMA, and she has been away from her family for many, many weeks, helping the citizens of our community and the greater area who have been affected by the floods. And we first want to thank you for your efforts on behalf of our city and our constituents. And then, because there's some important developments coming with the relief effort, give you an opportunity to hit some high notes of what people might expect.
Thank you. Brenda Gustafson, FEMA, we're at 1500 Innovation Drive in Lincoln is our joint field office. There are some just short announcements that I wanted to highlight. One of them is crisis counseling. We have found that during a disaster, people are moving and moving and moving, trying to get things done, and then all of a sudden it hits them, and they feel depressed, or there are other, all of the grieving thing that you go through, they're trying to get back to normal. And I just wanted to highlight that we give free crisis counseling, and that number for everyone is 1-800-464-0258. We've also extended the registration now a month. It's now June 19th that you can still register for help if you find now that you think you didn't have it before, but you do now, and you just recognize it, you can go ahead and still register for help. Also, for those people that have registered that received a letter of denial, we always suggest you read to the very bottom of the letter. They're going to tell you at the very bottom why you've been denied. Most, I'd say 80% of the time, it's a fixable item that you can do. They've transposed numbers, you didn't give them your bank account, the social security number didn't go through, some little something that you can change. And don't just throw those letters away if you're denied. Then the other thing is on national flood insurance program, for those people that are insured with flood insurance, there is a additional amount of money that you can get that's called increased cost of compliance. It's in addition to what your policy is paid, and you need to check with your agent to see if you qualify. It's for flood prevention items in your home, relocation or elevation. If you need to do any of that, it's extra money, and those are grants that's not, you don't have to pay that back. There've been 5,800 people register throughout the state of Nebraska. Douglas County has about a third of those. We've paid out $22 million in individual assistance, and we've paid out over $30 million in flood insurance claims in the short time that we've been here. I think the incident started on March 21st. I was here on March 22nd. So I have so enjoyed working in Nebraska, and I just want to thank everyone for the hospitality that they've extended to myself as well as my coworkers. I find Nebraskans to be amazing, very resilient, wanting to help each other at all times. In fact, sometimes they don't even want to take our help, they just said, "Oh, we can take care of that." No, we're here to help you. So just want to thank you and thank all of the council for all of the things that you do for your constituents. I know they're happy to know that they have you at their back. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And on behalf of Omaha, I think, before we give you a little recognition of thank you and by applause, she's not headed home, she's off to an earthquake, I believe.
Exercise.
Exercise. So thank you very much.
Sure.
Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution that effective 30 days after the adoption of this resolution, the Class C liquor license held by Rain Ultra Lounge located at 8919 North 30th Street is hereby canceled.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public, this is a hearing today, which we will receive testimony from both sides if we choose to continue. But we're going to start with a briefing first from our Council, Will Acosta Trejo, who's one of our city attorneys. You have the floor.
William Acosta Trejo, Assistant City Attorney. I'll explain briefly how this process works, since it's a little different from a public hearing. This is for the cancellation of the Class C liquor license for Millionaire Mines doing business as Rain Ultra Lounge at 8919 North 30th Street. The way that we'll proceed is, all those in favor of the cancellation, so the proponents for the resolution will go first. If the owner licensee, Mr. James Overton, or his attorney care to cross-examine those people, they may do so. There's a microphone here for cross-examination purposes, at which time, when the proponents are done, opponents, meaning people who don't wish to see the license canceled, will have that opportunity with Mr. Overton and his counsel, Mr. Kelly, and then the city, I will get to cross-examine them. Then the council will make a determination at that time on whether there is sufficient evidence to cancel the license or not. So just for reference sake, I've put this map up, the business that we're talking about, again, is 8919 North 30th, so this is up in the Florence area on North 30th, and you can see the property outlined in blue. And we will first go ahead and start with Captain Mark Matuza of the Omaha Police Department.
We wanted to give, if you had an opportunity, though, to give us an update on where we are in terms of things that we had asked Mr. Overton to do.
Sure. The Law Committee this morning had asked for the city to reach out and discuss some ongoing matters with Mr. Overton and his attorney, Mr. Kelly. There was concerns about the parking problems, concerns about noise problems, and there was another outstanding tax matter. The tax matter has been resolved. The parking problem and the noise problem will be addressed by Mr. Kelly in their presentation, but they have, they do have answers for the Law Committee.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name's Captain Mark Matuza, Northeast Precinct, 505 South 15th Street. I've been at the Northeast Precinct since December 2017. The following are the Omaha Police resources that we've given to the Rain Bar. Since the homicide at the Rain Bar in January 2018, we have received dozens of complaints against the bar from the Florence Neighborhood Association, 9/11 radio calls, officers' observations while on patrol, Omaha Police Business Watch, Angie Acting Camp has been a huge part of assisting us with closed property, Mayor's Action Complaints, Randy Peterson, and our chief's office, as well as a few of the council members here today. In response, the Omaha Police Department has supplied numerous resources to the Rain Bars, some of those including responding to multiple radio calls, over 50 radio calls over the past year, officers being assigned to monitor the bar after midnight, we're talking about every Friday and Saturday since January of 2018. In addition to now, we have Taco Tuesday, which is, which prompts us to also to be monitoring the bar at let-out and making sure everything's going according to plan. And I can go over some of the tab reports to kind of give you an idea of some of the things that have been going on. So not only that, traffic enforcement area, parking violations at neighboring closed property locations, the actual map that you were looking at, one of those being Albertson's Glass Company, and also the Florence Library. So those complaints have been mostly in regards to illegal parking, loud noise disturbances, drug activity in the bar, open drinking in the parking lot, gang members frequenting the bar, alleged underage persons in the bar, and fight disturbances. I personally collaborated with our Uniform Patrol, which I am in charge of, the Northeast Precinct, Vice Unit, Gang Unit, Business Watch, Nebraska State Patrol, multiple individual neighbors that are here today, Florence Neighborhood Association, business owners and the owner of the Rain Bar himself, James Overton. Over the past year and a half, our stats and resources over the past year are, and this is very, very conservative, over 150 traffic stops in the area, 90 parking violations, 25 parking violations just in March and April alone, over 50 9/11 radio calls generated by the neighbors, 100 traffic citations, 15 closed property violations, 15 cars towed from a result of parking violations, and that's, seven of those are just in April and May alone, 20 misdemeanor arrests, multiple driving under the influence, multiple driving during suspensions, and a gun arrest while on patrol in that particular area. In addition, we have documented seven tab reports against the Rain Bar over the past 18 months. We are easily talking about 300 man-hours that the police department has given to the Rain Bar in monitoring and making sure things are going as smooth as possible. And again, that's every Friday and Saturday, and now since the inception of Taco Tuesday, I'm giving Jay a lot of advertisement here, but since that inception, we've been there every Tuesday to monitor that as well. Some of the things that we would do, we would hang tape at Albertson's Glass, we would hang tape at the library. And we're talking the previous nine months, we ceased doing that because Mr. Overton failed collecting the tape after the fact. Some days, it would be left in the morning, and it's quite an eyesore. So since April, we have stopped doing that. I asked Mr. Overton if he could somehow regulate those parking lots, and I haven't gotten much help in regards to that. He has helped himself in regards to hiring off-duty police officers, which is pretty big, no doubt about it, but we are still there to monitor. Those police officers are there at the door as a deterrent. They drive their personal cars up there, they don't have police cars up there ready to take people to jail. So if they happen to have an incident where they have to arrest somebody, they have to call an on-duty police officer, and that happened May 5th. We have a tab report from that particular night in which there were rival gang members hanging out, the officers approached them in the Albertson's Glass just to the south. One of the parties took off running, they caught him. He is a 40th Ave gang member, and he was just arrested a month ago for possession of controlled substance. So these are the type of clientele that we're getting there, and we're doing our best to kind of keep it under control. In regards to the parking lot, to the grass right-of-way, which is to the west of the bar, if we look at that map again, am I able to? So if we look, it's just to the west, and that would be where my finger's at right here. That particular stretch of land belongs to the state of Nebraska, it's right-of-way that the City of Omaha maintains. Jay was telling the off-duty officers that he owns that property, he does not own that property, even if he did own that property, he can't have his patrons park there because it's a grass lot. Some of the things that happen in regards to that grassy area, they park there, they get stuck, they have to call tow trucks, and then the 30th Street is then blocked half hour to an hour on Friday and Saturday night on some particular evenings. This is according to the officers that work that particular area and the officers that are actually off-duty working as well. So I think that summarizes pretty much some of the things that the Omaha Police Department has witnessed and observed in regards to the Rain Bar. Are there any questions for me? If not?
Thank you, Captain Matuza. I don't have any questions. Mr. Kelly?
Just a couple.
Yes.
Have there been any violations at the license, at the license itself?
Yes.
What was that?
I believe there was one probably right around three, four months ago, in which a female was assaulted. She, there was a-
Was it liquor violation?
Yeah, I believe it was, per our Vice Unit.
Okay. You don't know for a fact if that was ever-
Well, it's-
If he's ever been followed up with liquor commission?
Well, our Vice Unit went to go see him a couple months, about a month ago, in regards to a violation. He said that that one did go through.
Well, okay. Never mind.
I could go through the specifics if you-
That's okay.
If need be.
One person questioning at a time here. The property that you talked about before, if you go back to that, that's a pretty good-sized piece of property, and it's currently owned by the state, correct?
The right-of-way, yes.
Right.
The grassy area here is what you're referring to?
If that were, if that were brought up to code-
My hand's way too big.
If that were brought up to code, that could provide some more parking, if he gained control of that.
Yeah, then he'd have to put concrete down.
Right, right. We understand it has to be brought up to code. And parking has been one of the biggest issues, correct?
Parking has been the biggest problem, and people hanging out in the lots as well.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
All right, at this time, we call Lonnie Albertson. Mr. Albertson, I'll do this from right behind you here. Can you tell us your name and your relation to the property?
My name is Lonnie Albertson, and me and my brother own the property at 8901 North 30th Street, which is Albertson Brothers Glass. 8901 North 30th Street.
And Mr. Albertson, you have a video here. Would you care to tell us what it is that we're looking at here on this video?
This is a video of a Friday or Saturday night, not too long ago, that the top-left picture is pointed towards the north side of our property, towards the rain. The one on the right top is pointed on the east side of our property, which is all our parking. The one on the bottom-left is the front side of our property, where the cops at, and the bottom-right is the west side of our property, which is next to 30th Street.
All right, and I'm going to jump ahead to about 2:12. This is, you can barely make out the timestamp here. It's about 2:12 in the morning. Do you see that? It's right down here underneath this.
Yep, 2:12.
And we're seeing some traffic over here. Can you tell us what's happening here?
They're going through the grass, over the sidewalk, over the curb, and going down 30th Street, which is Highway 75.
So we're seeing cars leave the rain lot, drive over the grass, and onto North 30th Street. Is that correct?
Yep.
And if we keep watching here?
Now they're coming through our property. They're going between a barricade and a tree.
And is that also over the grass?
Over the grass. That's, yep. Here comes another one.
And is this something that you've seen repeatedly from people leaving the Rain Lounge?
Repeatedly.
And if we had multiple instances of video, we would see the same thing?
I think there's even more cars that are going to go onto 30th, too. Yeah, and I mean, it's a Friday and Saturday night, from 11:30 to 2:00, it's just, the amount of people is just unbelievable. I think he's got like 34 stalls, and in those pictures, you can just see how many people are actually parking on our property, which we closed. It's, the cities, we turned it over to the city to close it down from 8:00 at night to 5:00 in the morning. So this is, this picture here is from the west side, and that has the south side of our building, which none of those cars should be there. On the right side of the video, those are called cars in the Florence Library, that that's closed also.
So as far as you know, both of these areas should be closed to people being parked there at 10 to 2:00 a.m.?
Yep.
One last picture here.
So that is the west side of Jay's property with, I think that was a Sunday after somebody got stuck, but you can see all the trails through that grass. That was the property that was on the, that they showed up there, that map that is the state.
And if we look, your property would be immediately to the, to the bottom right of this, is that correct?
Yep, yep.
And would the state of this be similar to the state of the grass to the left of your property?
Yes.
So is it safe to say that your concerns with the Rain Lounge are the parking and their customers' use of the grass as a means to enter and exit the property?
Definitely.
Are there any other-
There's only one way in there, which is a gravel alley that is basically one lane that butts up against our property, which, I mean, when they barricade off, they only go to the telephone pole. So they're actually using our property to get into the bars still.
Do you have any other concerns that you'd like the council to know?
I got something here that I could read, if I could read this, that breaks down a little bit about our, our business, where we've come from, what we've been dealing with for the last two, two years.
I can have you actually submit that to the clerk, but why don't I ask you, how long have you been in that location?
We've been there for 15 years. We just celebrated 15 years in business, three of which was with, 13 of it was when Three's Lounge was there, and it was basically a neighborhood bar. A little bit of trash, typical bar stuff. The last two years has just been, it's just been like putting your head up against the wall. It's just constant. There's trash everywhere, from condoms to broken bottles to piles of vomit to peeing on the back of our door. It's just a consistent chicken bones when he has the barbecue fired up. That's pretty much just every weekend deal. Now, don't get me wrong, some weekends aren't as bad as others, but Friday to Saturday night, if we ever, if we were a 24-hour business, there's no way we could get into our business. There's none. I mean, not without having more problems than what we have.
All right. Thank you. No further questions. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'd call Jerry Zulfer. The next one will be Ray Perrigo. Mr. Zulfer, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, I'm Jerry Zulfer. I live at 7712 North 36th Street. I've been in Florence for over 80 years, so I think I know what goes on in Florence.
And Mr. Zulfer, can you tell us briefly what your reasons are for supporting the cancellation of this liquor license?
Yes, I don't want to be redundant with Lonnie's already said, and the captain has already stated. I think I'll speak from the Citizens Patrol point of view. We're out there to observe, report, and we expect to be backed up, not only by the police, but the whole city administration. I don't see that's happening. We have lost members of our patrol because they don't feel that we're getting backed up. We have had cans thrown at our vehicles. In my 80 years and all the time that I used to drink, I have never went in a bar that somebody had to pat me down. And I've never heard of anybody being patted down at any bar in Florence until recently. That tells you what the clientele is. They have no respect for other people's property. They just go on and on, and then when they get in their cars, turn up their radios, and away they go. We have a man back here that lives next door. He can't even sleep in his bedroom. I wonder how you would like to go out and try and get out of your driveway with somebody parked in it from 9:00, 10:00 o'clock till 3:00 in the morning? That's some of the problems he has. I don't know if Nick's going to speak or not. But anyway, I'll let the rest of them speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions.
Thanks, sir. Where's your address again?
7712 North 36th Street.
Where is that from the bar?
Where's that at?
From the bar.
Oh, I'd guess about 12 blocks.
Okay, about a mile?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Last, Mr. Perrigo.
My name is Ray Perrigo, and I live at 8007 North 30th Street. I'm a lifelong resident of Florence. I've been there for 46 years in the same house, and I'm here representing the Omaha Coalition of Citizen Patrol that is in Florence. Early in the fall of 2017, my wife and I attended a public meeting in the neighborhood to see what we could do about checking out, getting the crime under control in the neighborhood. As a result of that, several of the members of that meeting formed the Omaha Coalition of Citizen Patrol for Florence. The purpose of our patrol group is to be the eyes and ears of the police. We observe and report any illegal activity while patrolling. Our patrol group began patrolling late fall of 2017. Every member of the group was concerned with the number of people on the street between 11:00 p.m. and 2:30 a.m. as they patrolled. In addition to the car traffic, there was considerable foot traffic between the Rain Lounge and the Get Down Lounge on 8509 North 30th Street. There was open drinking on the street and illegal parking everywhere. During our patrol, we witnessed drug use, public urination, and general disturbing of the peace. At the Rain Lounge on Friday and Saturday night, the rain is always overcrowded. Their lot is very small, therefore, the patrons of the bar were parking on the grassy area, which is state right-of-way, owned and maintained by the City of Omaha, and on the east side, they were parking on a grassy area that is owned by M U D. Albertson's Glass, and in addition to that, they were parking in a homeowner's property that is to the south. We saw cars driving down the sidewalk on the west side of the rain, both to exit and enter the lounge, due to the fact that there's only one narrow entry and exit in and out of that bar. We witnessed cars jump the island on 30th Street so they can get, go southbound, and leaving the rain and jumping the curb after exiting across the grass. One of our main concerns is for Nick Maslowsky, the resident to the south of the rain. Due to the loud noise, he has, he has had to move his bedroom- Due to the loud noise, he has, he has had to move his bedroom from the west side of his house to the east side of his house. I was in his house recently, and his bed is right in the middle of his living room, which is on the left side or on the east side of his house to get as far away from the noise as possible. There's been many times when his driveway has been completely blocked. He has had to put up barricades to keep patrons of the bar from parking in the driveway and also driving across. I've seen it. There had been many times the driveway has been completely blocked. He has also had to install a fence on the north side of his property to keep the cars off his property. Before putting up the fence, the Rain patrons would drive across his yard and continue driving across the soccer and baseball field to the east of the library and exit on Bondison Street. One night, there was a disturbance at the Rain, and a squad had to be called. Due to the illegal parking at the entrance to the Rain, the fire truck and squad could not get to the lounge. If Mr. Maslowsky had an emergency, there's no way could the emergency services get to his house. After the unfortunate killing of Sergeant LaFleur in January 2018, things at the bar seemed to quiet down. However, it did not take long for the bar to again become a problem. During the summer fall of 2018, large clouds, crowds again became an issue. I discussed this with Captain Matusza at the northeast precinct regarding our concern. I was told that the police had either talked or sent a letter to the owner regarding the parking on the grass. However, the parking on the grass still continued. When it snowed during the winter, the owner had a truck push the snow off the grassy area almost to the sidewalk on North 30th Street. The snow was also pushed back to the MUD fence on the east side. When the snow melted, the grassy areas on both sides became very muddy with cars getting stuck while others made deep ruts in the grassy area. I met with a representative from MUD regarding the possibility of getting a barrier to separate MUD property from the Rain.
Let me, if you can, just for a minute, Mr. Trail, are you asking questions, or just how is this working? Because some, some of this is being repeated over and over again, and we got a really long hearing today.
Mr. Perrigo, I'll go ahead and wrap this up for you. Uh, is it your understanding that MUD has gone and put a fence-style barrier on their property?
Yes, they put up a post and cable system.
Okay, and that prevents people from entering onto the MUD parking?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. If you want to submit your statement to the clerk, you can do that.
Thank you. Any other witnesses?
No other witnesses. I will mention that last week, the city council was provided with documentation which consisted of 911 calls, tavern reports. Those should be entered into the record, as well as, we have given the city clerk a copy of promises that Mr. Overton has agreed to, to enter into with the city of Omaha. And that concludes the city's portion.
Okay, thank you. Listen, Mr. Kelly, if we could hear from you next, and then if you have any witnesses to call.
Mr. President, members of the council, let me summarize a little bit.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Let me summarize here a little bit where I think we're at. James runs a place that has entertainment, and that's always a challenge. The number one problem here has clearly been parking, and that he's working on. He's been assigned several different things by the law committee, including the taxes, which were substantial, he's now paid them all. Moving forward, he wants to work on buying this piece of property, which will alleviate a lot of the problems. He's also going to immediately fix the Anderson Glass or, uh, problem and take the barrier out so nobody can have access to their lot anymore. So that'll solve that. Briefly, I'll bring up two witnesses to tell you the type of flavor this club is. It sounds pretty bad just hearing one side here, especially when there's, when the hearing's kind of going on, and you're getting a lot of hearsay, et cetera. So I want to just, I think where we were this morning with the law committee is still where we ought to be, and we ought to give him an opportunity to purchase his property and fix, fix this issue. Other issues like noise, we've got to deal with those. No question about it. And we'll work with the neighbors to make sure that happens. Typically, if, if it's contained inside a building, should be okay, but if it's violation of, of the noise meter, we, we have to own that. So we will. With that, we've got, uh... First, we have two witnesses, Mary Jo Russell, be one, we'd ask her to be very quick. Mary Jo? Is she here? I thought I had a witness. James, I'm just gonna come with you. She signed in. Just a couple of questions for you, James. State your name for the record and address.
James Overton, 3217 Ohio Street.
And sir, you are the owner of this establishment?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right, and you've heard my statements about working with the law committee and, and making sure that the things that, and you've heard in general what's going on here.
Absolutely.
And what are your, do you have anything to say to the council now?
We've addressed the, the concerns. I've actually went ahead and actually made contact in recently with Albertson's Glass in regards to actually going ahead and courting off their lot and actually paying to actually have posts put, put up to actually go ahead and allow the operators more or less a car lot, where they could actually lock the lot up at night, so where people can actually go and actually drive across the lot anymore. So I would actually have concrete posts installed and actually go ahead and have wiring put around their actual lot at my actual expense to keep people off of their lot. As far as from a perspective of Captain Matusza and, and his actual participation as far as actually keeping things under control, we have actually been in communication and actually cooperation with OPD since the inception of, of the business, more or less, as far as keeping things in order.
And you have off-duty police now?
Yes, we do.
And you pledge to continue to work with Officer Matusza?
Absolutely.
You understand whatever he says goes?
True enough.
Okay. And you can assure this council that you will do the things that the law committee has asked you to do if given that opportunity?
Absolutely.
I think that's all we have. Will, do you have any questions?
Mr. Overton, do you agree that the patrons that leave your building, that are in the areas around your building, are still your responsibility?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is that all the questions?
That's all.
Thank you. With that, we'll close. Mr. Jarom?
Yes, the Liquor Committee, which is the law committee, a subcommittee of the law committee, has met. We've had a couple of meetings on this particular issue. We've discussed with our legal counsel, the state of the law in Nebraska, particularly with recent developments, and taken a look at the tavern reports, the anecdotal evidence submitted by the neighbors and the community. And we've asked the licensee to do a number of things that we believe can and will be successful if we can come to fruition. And the number one thing is working with the police and being a partner with the police and demonstrating that by regular communications with Captain Matusza, hiring your own off-duty police, which you've done, and having those people on-site to assist the police so you're not a burden on the resources. So you've done the extra police. One of the things we had concern about as to whether you had the means to do the more longer-term improvements was your financial ability to, to make those. And one of the reasons why we had concerns was because of the delinquency on the restaurant tax. You've paid that. So you've demonstrated in doing that, I believe, that you have the financial wherewithal to, to invest in the sorts of improvements that are needed to address the situation that you've heard about in terms of your, being a good neighbor to the glass company and keeping people off the right-of-way. The more pressing need is parking. Unfortunately, because of the state and the city pointing fingers as to who owns the property to your west, which we've learned along this process, there's some cleanup work we need to do to, with the State Department of Transportation, City Legal, Planning, Public Works, in terms of getting the legal description of that no man's land, so to speak, clearly reflected to be in the title and ownership of the city and its right-of-way.
Absolutely.
Once you do that, there's a process through Public Works that we've asked you to do and Planning to apply for the vacation of a portion of that right-of-way, which will allow you to improve that area and secure it into a much bigger parking lot that meets codes and standards upon review and approval.
Yes, sir.
But that process can't begin until the city is convinced the title of the property is in its name. And we've had other situations around the city where that's happened, particularly in Midtown, and our state senator for the area helped with the DOT get that done, and it took about two or three months. So we believe that while we've had a, a start to the hearing today, the committee's recommending we, we continue, take a recess in the hearing today by motion to, A, reconvene on the first Tuesday in November for the resumption of this hearing, which would allow time for this legal issue to get resolved with the land ownership and you to apply for the vacation of the right-of-way, to, to come back before the law committee at its meeting in July, and that you install the, the fence, the barrier in accordance with approval of the Law Department and our Planning Department, so you meet code to secure the property, that you have monthly meetings with Captain Matusza, no less than on a monthly basis, and as he wishes. And, um, we will see if it's, if it's possible to address these issues. If not, we've got an end date where we will resume the hearing if the motion passes in November. Now, having said that, that doesn't mean that the blinders are put on. It doesn't mean that you're not being watched. It doesn't mean you don't have to take the affirmative steps we've talked about and expect you to be doing between now and then. It just means that we're giving you some time that we believe can, if comes to fruition, address the biggest issue. So with that, that would be my motion. I know that there'll probably be a second, but I do, Mr. Festerson, who represents the area, I'm sure wants to be heard, and others, I see.
Yes. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I, I do appreciate the work of everyone here today and everyone involved, and especially the Liquor Committee, who has paid attention to this issue and has had a lot of conversations with the applicant and is proposing what Councilman Jarom just described. I do think that would be a better situation than we have today. And I expect there probably will be a second for it, and I, I just want to point out that should that pass today, that is better than where we are today, but it's not something I'll support today. I feel I do need to support my constituents. This is in my district. There have been a lot of complaints over a long period of time, and I'm sorry that it's gotten to this point, but I'll be voting against the motion because I am supporting the cancellation based upon what I've heard from the local businesses, the Neighborhood Association, the Citizens Patrol, and certainly our Police Department. There have been a lot of disturbances here over the month, over several months, a lot of police calls, some of them quite serious, and a lot of, a lot of police resources dedicated to this. We just heard over 300 personnel hours, and then certainly the parking and neighborhood concerns that were just described to be, being a major one. So although what has been described by the Liquor Committee does put you on notice and does set forth a plan by which you must meet, it makes me nervous that that's a six-month timeframe. I hope it does improve, but that's my position here today.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think in addition, you, you mentioned a November 1 to resume. I believe there's also probably a, a planning issue that comes into play here, too. I think there's an assumed, um, special use permit on the site, since I, I believe it's own general industrial, and, and so there's an assumed special use permit on the site. So there probably need to be a major amendment to that assumed special use permit, which that approval process would probably take about another three months. So I'll ask Mr. Fanslow to, I guess, weigh in on that or tell me if that's correct?
Yeah, Dave Fanslow, City Planning. Yeah, that's correct, Brinker. Assume it's property zone GI. The use is a cocktail lounge. If the site expands, it's, the code calls for a major amendment to that use permit, which requires Planning Board and, Planning Board recommendation, City Council approval.
That has a process. That would be contemplated in what the motion includes, is he has to do the things in accordance to the Planning Department, Public Works Department requirements in order to obtain lawful use of that property should it become city property.
So the reason I bring that up?
Which would include what you just talked about.
Yeah, so I mean, there's, but that process, until he has control of that ground?
Can't begin.
Can't begin unless there's probably sign-off by, by the party, the other, the parties who have control of the ground at the time.
Right. I don't feel more comfortable going longer than the six months. I would, I would anticipate if Senator Wayne is enlisted, like we used, Senator Howard with the analogous situation in my district on who owns the property. And that can happen in the next month, that you then have five months to apply to the planning for this major amendment and to Public Works for the vacation of the right-of-way. And I don't know if five months is enough. I'm kind of looking at the planning.
Probably, it probably should be, should probably, normally it'd be about a three-month process.
I would think there's enough time in there to do that.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have that on the record as well, too.
Second. Are you seconding Mr. Jarom's motion? Okay. Mr. Harding, is that complete?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to lay over this hearing for, until November 5th, November 5th? And the other conditions that were laid out previously? With that, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item?
Items seven to 14 can be considered together for 33 Mason North, replat 1, located northwest of 33rd and Mason Streets, and 33 Mason South, replat 1, located southwest of 33rd and Mason Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B is communications in opposition. This is approvals for ordinances to approve a major amendment to a PUR overlay district and to approve the development plans for these locations. Resolutions to approve the preliminary plats with a waiver of Section 53-84A, lot depth for 33 Mason North, replat 1. Resolutions to approve the final plats and resolutions to approve the subdivision agreements.
Public hearing is seven through 14.
Yes.
Public hearing agenda items number seven through 14 are today. Proponents, please. Any proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve contingent upon the applicant completing the fence and trash remediation that he promised at the last hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve subject to the agreements that were talked about earlier that are on the record. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items seven through 14 are approved, five to two. Item 15, a resolution to approve the Ainsworth and Beverly Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 2230 and 2236 Jones Street, in an amount up to $285,000. A is a request from the applicant to delay the vote until the May 21st, 2019 City Council Meeting. B is communications in opposition. C is a communication received from David Palladino.
To, play, place on file.
Okay.
Request to place on file.
Uh, yes.
Move to place item 15. File.
Second. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, seven to zero.
Place on file.
To place on file.
Yes. Item 16, an ordinance to rezone property located at 2230 and 2236 Jones Street from DS District to CBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow auto sales in a GC district for property located at 310... for property located at 3106 North 63rd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and agenda item number 17 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Fanslow, I want to just engage the Planning Department on this issue briefly. This is a special use permit in Benson, in my district, towards the northwest entryway of that business district. And what's applied for here is an automotive sales on essentially what is a vacant lot, which is not ideal in my, from my perspective, but what has been done by the Planning Board and Planning Department that is favorable in this respect is the requirements of landscaping and buffering and also closing off some curbing there that's a problem for traffic and safety. Could you just describe that a little bit for us, since the applicant's not here, and what will be required of them? And then also, I know we discovered an oddity sort of in the exhibit there that needs to get addressed for the record as well.
Yeah, sure. Dave Fanslow, City Planning. Would you like me to come down so I can show you the oddity?
Sure.
Okay. So, yeah. You are correct. Are these on? Yeah. Special use permit for auto sales in the GC district. What we received at the application, the time of application was a site plan that needed some work. So as part of the requirements of that special use permit, we required additional landscaping on the east, west, and south boundaries of the site. We also required that two of the, there's three driveway locations into this small site. Two of those will be closed. We also required that the applicant come back to us and apply for the MCC overlay. So there's a number of measures that we put on this application and this site plan to recommend to the Planning Board for approval. And I'll show you a picture of what the site looks like now. It's that set right there. It's vacant. It's been vacant for a number of years. This is the, this is the approved, basically, this is the approved site plan. So what we, again, what we required was the closing of this entrance and this entrance, reestablishing the curb, putting in landscaping in those areas. This will be the only entrance into the site. We also required additional landscaping and a screen on the western boundary of the site. It's five feet now, I believe, and we're going to increase that to nine, which is the required buffer yard. There's no landscaping on the south boundary now. We're requiring 10 there. We're also requiring, excuse me, 10 on the east side, and what I noticed this morning is the site plan only shows five, but it's in the minutes of the Planning Board hearing. It's on our recommendation. Planning Board voted in favor of this use permit to, in addition to that 10 feet required on that eastern side. We will make sure that's in place. We'll make sure that 10 foot's in place prior to issuing the CO.
Great. Thank you.
You bet.
Let the record show, too, that that's what I, when I motion to approve, that's what I'm motioning to approve as well, which you just described, as well as the 10-foot landscaping on the eastern side there that will need to get corrected, I presume through the certificate of occupancy process.
Correct. We'll reach out to the applicant or his representative, and with the plans come in for building permit, we'll make sure that's part of it. It's just not in our file right now, but we'll make sure a copy gets in.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
And thank you for your work on this. Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item 17. I'm sorry, there's another light. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Melton.
Thank you. I just want to say that I want to be consistent, you know, just on items seven through 14, you know, we'd received opposition. The reason I voted no is I'm really fully supportive of the entire project. Received no call from the applicant, received nothing. There was some opposition. There were questions and conditions, yet they decide they won't even take the time to come down here to speak to us. So my only no is just kind of the fact that they took it upon themselves. We make bar owners and managers come down here and sometimes have to sit through the owner, the interlude, who just wanted to have a fundraiser for flood victims sat down here last week for three and a half-
Three hours.
Three and a half hours so that he could get a liquor license because it was his, it was his agenda item. And so I guess on this one, where we're talking about automotive sales in an area where the Planning Department has put a number of conditions, and I appreciate the work that Mr. Fanslow has done, but I don't think Mr. Fanla, Mr. Fanslow, that it's his duty to come up and speak for the applicant and then to say, I'm going to contact the applicant. The applicant, I think, should be here today, should commit to the conditions and tell us what his intent is going to be. And so I, if the applicant was here, so that we could ask the applicant some questions, then I most likely would vote yes. So my no vote's going to be consistent with my vote from seven through 14. It's because the applicant did not make themselves available for any questions, not because I don't necessarily support the application.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve this. No further lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 18, an application to consider a Class CK liquor license for the Cooler located at 2323 North 24th Street.
Public hearing and agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Miranda Adams. Address 2323 North 24th Street.
And Titus Adams.
And you just here to answer any questions we may have.
Yes.
Thank you. I got a couple of things to say to you after you leave, though. Are there any other, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Before we head on-
I'd just like to know where that's at, 2323 North 24th.
Yes, ma'am. We're located at 24th and Willis.
Public hearing is closed. I can't make the motion, but I will say, I did want to say to you all that it is, it is very pleasing to see you redevelop and move into that area and have the success that you all are having with the Cooler. And I'm very much supportive of the liquor license and very much supportive of the work that you all have been doing in the community. Thank you for making all of our Business Improvement District meetings.
Yes, thank you.
We're going to get some really significant things done in that area with that Business Improvement District, and part of the reason for that is you all's commitment to 24th Street, and I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Is there-
Move the approval.
Second. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck.
Item 19, an application to consider a Class CKG liquor license for Thunderhead Brewing Tap Room located at 1037 Jones Street.
Public hearing and agenda item number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Ave., here with Bo Starckel. That's another, I think, fabulous addition to downtown, assuming you approve it. Thunderhead, you know those guys, and they're doing a great job, young entrepreneurs here. And I've been happy to represent them and proud of them. So with that, we would ask for your approval.
Thank you.
And we're here for any questions if you have it.
Sure. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 19. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. All right. Item 18, an application to consider a Class CKG liquor license for Thunderhead Brewing Tap Room located at 1037 Jones Street.
Public hearing and agenda item number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Ave., here with Bo Starckel. That's another, I think, fabulous addition to downtown, assuming you approve it. Thunderhead, you know those guys, and they're doing a great job, young entrepreneurs here. And I've been happy to represent them and proud of them. So with that, we would ask for your approval.
Thank you.
And we're here for any questions if you have it.
Sure. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 19. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you, guys.
Item 20, an application to consider a Class DK liquor license for beverage catering of Nebraska located at 4724 North 24th Street.
Public hearing and agenda item number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, my name's Harry Washington. Address is 4724 North 24th Street.
And you just here to answer any questions we might have.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Proponents? In favor of? Okay. Are there any opponents? Let me make sure to know other, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, no opponents. Come on down. Just have a seat there. Name and address, please, for the record, and-
My name's David Hyer.
To the microphone, please.
My name's David Hyer. I live on 2419 Laramore. And my question was, are they going to sell liquor on the premises? You know, we have bills right down the street, and on the other side, we have another liquor store, and we've been trying to, you know, we've been trying to clean up 24th and Ames. I don't know if it's a good idea to have more liquor stores.
My understanding is it's a package license with a catering component to it. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir. Basically-
You got to come to the microphone.
Yes, and basically, that location-
Name and address for the record again.
Oh, Harry D. Washington, 4724 North 24th Street. Basically, that location will only be used for the storage of our beverages. No sales will come out of that location.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, the answer is great.
Okay. Answered it great. Okay, thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. How y'all doing?
Good afternoon.
My name's Jereen Flicks. I live at 2431 Laramore. And my question was the same as his, but when I read this paper, besides the, you're having it storaged at the building, it says, "Sell or dispense for consumption at premises designated in a special, a special designated license." So does that mean they'll have like a party at the building and then they'll sell liquor at the building? Because like I say, we're cleaning up 24th Street. I've been in my house for 33 years, and we have grandkids and kids all around. And right now, 24th Street's being bailed up, so we don't want nothing negative in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Because I love it. I love the north side.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's confirm for the record for us, if you would, please. Name and address for the record, that there'll be no parties on site and-
Yes. My name is Harry D. Washington. The address is 4724. I will confirm that there'll be only, no parties, first of all, and only storage for the beverages. I also am a director of a business on 24th Street, so I understand your concern, and so, yeah. It's just for storage.
Just so you all know, he runs the Love Jazz and Arts.
I know Big LeW used to be there years ago, but I'm saying the church is right across the street.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Do you, okay, all right. With that, public hearing is closed.
I have a question.
Question, Mr. Palermo.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Sir, so tell me why you're applying for a liquor license for a storage area of alcoholic beverages.
Well, it's a catering business, which will allow us to go to different venues, fairs outside, events outside, and sell alcoholic beverages and possibly food. And basically, I have a friend that owns that building, and he's allowed me to use it as storage.
Okay. So the DK is for catering only, then I take it?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 20. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Okay, yeah, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty, there are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty is approved, seven to zero.
Doug, thank you for your continued work at Love Jazz, I know that's not an easy thing sometimes, but thank you for continuing to be there.
Item twenty-one, an application to consider an addition to Billy Frog's Class C liquor license located at one-one-two-zero Howard Street to add a basement area approximately one-hundred-and-twelve feet by one-hundred-and-twelve feet.
Public hearing agenda item number twenty-one is today, proponents please.
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, twenty-eight oh-four South Eightieth Seventh Avenue, appearing here for Billy Frog's. And yes, this is a basement area, they're gonna expand it and make a, have an arcade area down there. So with that, we're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-one, no lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-two, an application to consider an addition to Gold Mountain Restaurants'Class I liquor license located at six-seven-five-zero Mercy Road, Suite one-zero-two-B, to add an outdoor area approximately fourteen feet by thirty-four feet to the east. A is communication from the planning department.
Public hearing agenda item number twenty-two is today, proponents please.
Hi, my name is Jenny Fong-Yugarte, I'm at Gold Mountain LLC over at six-seven-five-zero Mercy Road.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Subject to the-
Permits.
Permits.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item twenty-two, subject to you getting the appropriate permits, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item twenty-three, an application to consider an addition to Smitty's Garage Burgers and Beers Class I Liquor License located at seven-six-one-zero Dodge Street to add an L-shaped outdoor area approximately thirty feet by fifteen feet. A is communication from the planning department.
Public hearing, public hearing agenda item number twenty-three is today, proponents please.
Hi, my name's Kimberly Smith, I'm Smitty's Garage, seventy-six-ten Dodge Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Subject to permits.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item twenty-three, subject to you getting the proper permits, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item twenty-four, an application to consider a special designated license for Slowdown for a beer garden on a lot adjacent to seven-two-nine North Fourteenth Street on Friday, July twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, from five PM to midnight with music until midnight.
Public hearing agenda item number twenty-four is today, proponents please.
Hey, Jason Cobble with Slowdown, seven-two-nine North Fourteenth Street. This is a request for a speci- special designated license for a concert we're having at a parking lot out behind our building, it's adjacent. It starts at six-thirty, scheduled to end eleven forty-five. It's a four-band touring bill, just requesting to go until twelve for a buffer, and here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-four, no lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-four is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-five, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Park Avenue Grocery Store located at one-one-zero-seven Park Avenue. A is communications and opposition.
Public hearing agenda item number twenty-five is today, proponents please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, twenty-eight oh-four South Eightieth Seventh Avenue, appearing here with the applicant, Mr. Calabresi. We're aware that there's some significant neighborhood opposition to this, and we respect that opposition. I think some of the opposition is based, maybe not totally understanding that type of operation he intends to put there. And I guess it's our job to convince you of what we're trying to do there. Number one, trying to put in a grocery, not a liquor store. So the grocery would be a small grocery, but it would have, it would be full service, and by that, I mean, you'd have dairy, you'd have fresh bread, you'd have meat, you'd have poultry, produce. That's my definition of full, whole grocery store. It's not high V, but it's, you've got your basic products. And then in addition to that, they're going to have a small kitchen open with a limited menu, but open for, for prepared food on site from eight in the morning till ten at night. And then they would have, if they get approval, then they would have liquor as well. We understand the nature of this neighborhood, we understand the concern. There's been a lot of progress in that neighborhood, we applaud that progress, that's why they're attractive to him to come in there. He has run a different type of operation out at Thirty-Ninth and Maple for a long time, which is a convenience store, but he's done that very well. He's had thirteen years with no violations, he does not cater to the vagrant type folks who, the alcoholics who are undesirable to a neighborhood, who are sick people, but they cause all kinds of problems with alcohol. So that's, he has no intention of serving that type of customer. And he went briefly, just door-to-door, he's not open yet, of course, he went briefly door-to-door and got about sixty signatures of local people that live right there. I've got that all submitted to the clerk. And he only started that, just doing that on Friday, and of course, weather's been not cooperative. So I think that's even pretty amazing, just doing that. Both of you have gone door-to-door politically, and I know you all have, so you know how difficult that can be. I guess with that, I guess, that's our, that's our, what we wanna do, I'm gonna introduce Mr. Calabresi to you for questions and any statements he would like to make, especially, Tom, assure them what, what, excuse me, what you are going to, what kind of service you can provide to the neighborhood, especially in, if the folks knew this was absolutely gonna be a grocery store-
Yeah.
-might have a whole different idea. So please address, give your name and address, address the council.
Yeah, my name is Thomas Gabrisalase, and the grocery we open is just for, serve for neighborhood. So we're gonna do fresh produce, meat, milk, bread, everything, mostly the eighty-five percent is grocery item. So maybe fifty percent like beer, wine, wine straight we can do, but most of them is for the neighborhood need. When I talk to the neighborhood, when I ask the neighborhood, they are glad to open the grocery store and the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you wish any rebuttal?
That's all we'd like rebuttal of, when it comes time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
She's in the back. Do you want me-
Yeah, just have her come in. Go ahead.
Mary Wells, two-nine-six-seven Pacific Street, Park Avenue Neighborhood Association President. Today, I'm asking city council to support me, my children, and the entire neighborhood by declining the application of the liquor license at eleven-oh-seven Park Avenue. I also wanna thank Mr. Gabrisalase for inviting us into his establishment, so we could speak to him face-to-face and learn a little more about what he plans to do there. But I will say, a couple of things we took away from that was, he would assure there would be no, that he would address the loitering and the trash, which to me were just admissions of what this establishment absolutely brings, it's not an if it happens, it's a when it happens. So I will speak versus the neighborhood president. As a neighborhood, we have fought against this type of business, we have collectively cleaned up the neighborhood, in particular, the Park Avenue corridor. We have raised funds to install benches at our bus stops, add banners to our utility poles, host national night outs, and facilitate neighborhood cleanups. We supported in common in adding a community park to our street, right on Park Avenue, and we participate in their annual trunk-or-treat event for the children. Our neighborhood has a very large population of children, and we support safe and secure environment for them and all the residents. In spite of all of the hard work and successes, we still have many challenges in our neighborhood. The easy access to liquor has been detrimental to our community, we have a large number of intoxicated people who walk our streets at any given time of the day. I'm talking seven AM, eleven AM, three PM, midnight, constant. The amount of police nine-one-one calls that occur in our area due to alcohol is exorbitant. Another liquor store on Park Avenue would contradict all the hard work that we as a neighborhood, and you all as city council and the city have done to help us get there. It's been a long, hard road uphill, and I believe you all know that. I know that this business owner has another successful store on Forty-oth and Maple. I'm familiar with this store as I've worked in the, in that area a little bit, and while it is clean on the outside, the large commercial windows are bricked up, all the small windows have bars, the doors have bars, and it is plastered with alcohol advertisements. So even though that is a grocery store, and this will be a grocery store, the advertisements are telling me otherwise. And more importantly, on that particular corner of his at thirty-nine twenty-eight Maple Street, when you pan around to the neighboring properties, it's complete disinvestment, to use the assessor's terms. I believe each and every property is either poor or worn-out condition. These types of properties are a ripple effect. The neighborhood where his current establishment is is also different from ours in that we have much more dense concentration of people. We are right on a historic streetcar line, a major bus route, it steps from eleven-oh-seven Park Avenue. We have physically, financially, and emotionally poured ourselves and invested into this neighborhood and the people of this neighborhood. We request respectfully, but firmly, that you honor the work that we have done by supporting us today. And I will speak very briefly, as a resident of the neighborhood, my children are nine and ten, we live a half a block from this property, some of the traffic goes, that goes by my front door, where I sit maybe fifteen feet from the physical street, my front porch, it's disturbing. That's how I know specifically of the intoxication that walks through the neighborhood all day long, every day. My children are not allowed to walk on Park Avenue, they're not allowed to walk to the park that they helped build and design that is on Park Avenue. I myself avoid Park Avenue as an adult in the daylight. I hope to teach my children that if you care about your community, if you wanna make a change, that you have to stand up and use your voice. We are put on this earth to take care of each other, speak for those who cannot be here, and those who do not speak the same language, but also want a safe place for their children to grow. I would also note that the notification for this meeting, while I greatly appreciate it myself, was sent out only in English, and our neighborhood is highly Hispanic. So there's a large population of people that were not even afforded the opportunity to come here today and use your, use their voice. For that, I thank you, and I ask you to support our neighborhood, please.
Thank you, and thank you for making us aware of the only one language, too. Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Michaela Tallman, two-nine-six-one Harris Street. I am also the vice president of the Park Avenue Neighborhood Association. I am a mother of three, you probably heard my youngest squawking back there earlier. I am here to speak to you primarily as a mother. I also live about half a block from eleven-oh-seven Park Avenue, and my children and I frequently go on walks around the neighborhood, and we have greatly enjoyed the new park that was put in about two years ago, and that included a lot of time, money, and other investment from local businesses, community members, and neighborhood, the Neighborhood Association. This has been something that was really lobbied for because we are a very densely populated area with very little green space for our children to play safely. So this was a push as part of the greater effort to clean up Park Avenue and the neighborhood for our kids to be able to run and to play. We know, it's even noted in article nine of the city ordinances, that we know that alcohol and the availability of alcohol has significant effects on our quality of life. We also know that the zip code that you are born into has an impact on your quality of life and on your life expectancy. As Mary noted, we have a huge population of young children, they see what businesses are available to them. This would be the second business within approximately five-hundred feet of that playground where people could purchase off-package alcohol, or off-sale alcohol. That is not what our children need to be seeing. A grocery store, great. Places to purchase food, great. We do not need more alcohol in the area, our children do not need to be seeing that, and we need to protect the area that would actually be within the perimeter of that park area. To my knowledge, the only two stores, the two closest stores to it, would be alcohol stores that children could go into, not places to purchase coffee or clothing, but alcohol. And I don't think that sends a good message, it's not safe, and this is our future, these are our children, and I wanna protect my children and their peers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Jim Rich, my business address is eleven-twenty-seven Park Avenue. The business is Harvest Development, it's two doors down from this operation that's proposed. I'm here in opposition, I want, I'm here to support Mary and association in the neighborhood. As some of you may know, we've invested very heavily in this neighborhood over the past several years, and we are concerned and interested that it moves in the right direction, and we wanna keep it moving in that direction, and I'm concerned that a liquor store at this, at this location will cause it to go the other way. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, Christian Gray at eleven-thirty-four South Thirtieth Avenue. I also stand in opposition to this Class D liquor license just around the, the neighborhood. You could take it a stone and throw it to two or three other establishments that have the same type of outpackage liquor license, so it's unnecessary in the, in the community. As a resident for the past seven years and a community worker for the past ten years, I can attest to everything that's been said about all the hard work and investment that's been placed in the neighborhood to get it to where it's at today. I think it's interesting and ironic that the DBA for this liquor store is the Park Avenue Grocery Store, because just three or so years ago, a similar establishment closed with that same name, and it also had the same kind of business practices, and it was a celebration for us to move beyond that Park Avenue Grocery Store. To have this one return will just be setting us back three years from work, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Yes, High Brett Kane Percipio, eleven-twenty-seven Park Avenue. We're a development company in the area, we've bought and redeveloped many properties, multifamily buildings, and helped place people in homes on Park Avenue, and we've been excited to be there for the last seven years and see the change out my window, and we would like to continue to see that change, and we, as a company, do not support another liquor store right there on Park Avenue.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Joshua Prentissil, twenty-nine sixty-one Pacific Street. I'm the director of a graduate program at Creighton University. We bring in students from all over the world for two years of intensive study. The Park Avenue neighborhood is one that I recommend to our students to live in because it is safe, diverse, affordable, and has amenities that are typical of a large urban center. I think that having a liquor store on Park Avenue would move the neighborhood in the opposite direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
My name's Patrick Malley, I have the building on Pacific Street and Thirtieth Avenue. I've been down there for about twenty-five years, so I've went through every change that's been happening in Park Avenue. I've invested quite a bit of money in that area as well. I don't think that another liquor store helps us. There's a convenience store on Martha and Park Avenue, and if you drive by there, you'll see a lot of people standing out in the parking lot, drinking, prostitution still goes on in our neighborhood. I've seen over the years that if we have this in there, the element of people that draws, we don't want. We've moved on to that, and we're gonna keep going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, city council members. Thank you for having me. My name is Mary Jo Russell, and I live at eleven-ten South Thirtieth Avenue, apartment five. And I do have some questions. This is a problem nationwide with, it's a saturation of administering liquor license just across the board. One, I just looked up today, anybody can Google it, about New York City, the State Liquor Authority just written in a rule, it's a five-hundred-foot rule, because there's so many establishments that are asking for liquor license, so it's oversaturation of liquor license, and I was wondering if the city council has any type of authority, who is over the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission? As far as the saturation of liquor license, it's not conducive to neighborhoods, it destroys the neighborhoods. I would like to see that, something, some type of oversight or other things written into the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission about over-administrating liquor license. The gentleman that is asking for this liquor license, he says he's gonna have fifty percent food, and that's not a lot, fifty percent, and the other fifty percent is gonna be alcohol, and I believe this gentleman is targeting this area. It's a neighborhood, and it's come a long way, Park Avenue, and down on Twenty-Ninth and Woolworth, they seem to target low-income places, and on Twenty-Ninth and Woolworth, there's a gas station, midtown grocery, and it's small, but to the south of it is a low-income, they go according to your income, and that's, that's a target that, it's a target that they're coming in and gonna take advantage of people, that there, there's buildings there that are designated for low-income, for various reasons, people are in those low, go according to your income because of medical-
We're gonna have to keep it down in there, please. Thank you.
Because of medical issues that they have, their caregivers to maybe their parents, and not everyone makes forty-eight thousand a year or a hundred-and-fifty thousand a year, so people look for- So people look for apartment availabilities that are reasonable. But with that, it seems they get targeted because of this low-income places. And there's another one that the gentleman here wants to purchase and get this liquor license, and it's on the north side, and they go according to your income also.
Okay. Yeah, ma'am, let's, let's stay focused on the one that's here first.
Okay.
Okay.
So all this support in common has been doing tremendous support, and they're mainly, they're just apartments all along there.
Okay.
And so there's this 500-foot rule that New York has established with the liquor-
I understand. We, we have one of those rules too, so thank you.
Okay. Well, then, that one on 29th and Woolworth is just like two and a half blocks, and they sell alcohol. And then there's the International Bakery, which is diagonally, they sell alcohol. And then there's a grocery store down the street that sells alcohol.
But we're talking about, we're talking about a couple of different things. But yeah, I understand what you're, what you're talking about.
So-
If you could wrap up for me, though.
Oh, well, I, I would like to wrap up then. So I would like to conclude with a prayer. And I pray all heavenly angels surround about the city council with strength, courage, clarity, and discernment in making the right and good decision about the neighborhood. I also pray to the heavenly angels that surround east, west, south, north of Hansken Park, that we continue to encourage support, lifting one another up with compassion, in compassion, with the love of thy neighbors as thyself. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Blessing to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Bianca Bautista, 2961 Pacific Street. I'll make this brief. I echo everyone's concerns about bringing in a liquor store. I welcome a grocery store, but the liquor store license is not something I support. And I fear that it's preying upon a vulnerable community where people do struggle with addiction and that it is going back to the progress that we've made. I also like to point out there's a discrepancy in the amount of percentage of liquor sales. I met with the owner just a couple days ago, on Friday. He mentioned selling 25%. Today he's selling, he's saying 15%. I just find that also interesting, that the percentages keep on changing.
Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Emily Hellbush. I speak on behalf of both Round Hill Pacific, that's a business. We own, 2510 Harney Street. We own both the Normandy as well as Daisy Terrace. And then I speak personally, I own 539 Park Avenue. I've lived in Midtown for a long time. I've enjoyed how it's, how it's improved. And I do also agree the sentiment that's been reflected here, that it's just gonna prey upon the individuals that have been working to better the area and the individuals that do struggle with addiction that live in the area. I don't think it's a, a good investment for Omaha. I think personally, it's, things have been turned around, and I think we should just continue to go in that direction, as well as the discrepancies. Sorry, it's kind of-
Thank you.
-hearing it.
Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, is there any rebuttal that you would like to have, Mr. Kelly?
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 37th Avenue. Again, the opponents are very articulate, and they, they, almost all of them have focused in on liquor store. And I would concede, we shouldn't put a liquor store there. It's all about whether this is truly gonna be a grocery and whether it's 15 or 20 or 25%. That's not a lot of alcohol sales. If you're talking beef and poultry and that type of thing, that's what he intends to do. You have the tools to make him do that. And if he doesn't do that, you can pull the license. I guess, and this is a tough spot. I mean, if I was sitting there, that's a group I would listen to. And I understand that, and they're very articulate. But I, I think the, the truth is, though, what he advises, they really don't oppose, I don't think. If it's, and again, it can't be sold to the wrong kind of folks. Maybe I don't understand the neighborhood enough. I've seen a lot of, lived here my whole life, think I do, and maybe I don't.
Just keep it down, please. Thank you.
But, but I'm addressing the council right now.
Yes, sir.
So I, I think most people, if you put a grocery there with some decent alcohol products, and they're upscale, upscale wine, upscale things, and you're not serving the kind of folks these people are worried about, you don't have a problem. Especially if you have a restaurant, not a lot of restaurants you can go to. I'm thinking of the people who don't have access to vehicles, who, who are on foot in that neighborhood. I know there's a lot of them. And to me, that'd be a very convenient place. You have so many weapons to shut it down now if he didn't follow through what he says. So I'm asking you to give him a chance. I understand the reluctance, but I'm asking to give him a chance. I think he's a qualified owner-operator. He's not gonna do anything like what he did at 40th and Maple, different situation, totally different situation. There was a security situation there. And he may call that a grocery, but that's not what we're talking about here. This, that's a convenience store. This is true, intended to be a grocery. So with that, we would ask, ask for your approval with any conditions that you can think of.
All right. Thank you. With that, we close the public hearing. Mr. Jarrett.
Yes, Kathy, would you come up?
Kathy Gonzalez, Omaha Police, 505 South 15th Street.
Southeast Precinct Captain.
Southeast Precinct Captain, yes.
Daughter of my neighbors.
Yes. They're watching.
Welcome. You've been the Southeast Precinct Captain for how long?
Since February of 2010.
I was elected in May of 2009, sworn in the first week in June of 2009. And can you give us just a minute of history of what, that picture of what Park Avenue, South Leavenworth, from 29th to, say, 36th, 33rd looked like back then?
We had several issues. I mean, we continue, I've got some stats here just to show you kind of what the element is still today. We still have some challenging situations, but it has greatly improved. I mean, the refurbishment of that area has increased dramatically. We've got some great neighbors, they've talked about in common already, that's done some phenomenal things, including the park. I don't want to reiterate the things that are already discussed, but there has been some great movement within that area.
The, just so you know, when I got elected and walked that neighborhood as a part of the process of doing that, the alleyway, particularly between 29th and Park Avenue, was wide open for any kind of illicit behavior. You could buy or sell sex. You could buy or sell drugs. You had people who were getting knifed. You had people who were getting shot. There, it was so brazenly in the open, the, the dealers and the Johns, excuse me, the pimps would bring in camper trailers. You know, you keep, you keep, you've been asked once, I would respectfully request that you respect the decorum of, of the building in the, in this council. And if we have to ask you again, I'm gonna ask you to leave. Thank you. People in the neighborhood, and you heard a lot of long-timers there here today, they've lived through that nightmare. And you've had people like the developer here, Harvest, Urban Village, the, two or three others uptown, there's two waiting to go in, and they've invested literally tens of millions of dollars working with the neighborhoods. And then you have organizations, community partners, as small as in common, I don't know if Mr. Gray's still here, who, in order to try to preserve housing stock for low-income citizens in this neighborhood on Park Avenue, have invested with their stakeholders in the Bristol, that it will be just in close proximity to this. You have the Omaha Housing Authority towers at, at Park Avenue and Woolworth in very close proximity with the issues that we still deal with because of the Midtown gas and grocery at that same location, with the availability to purchase alcohol at Super Mercado Dito and the Super Mercado No Ostra Familia. There's adequate density there to serve the needs of the neighborhood. And there's still issues we're dealing with. We may not have the prevalence of the gangs and the thugs that were there before, but we still have problems with, with, with people who have really poor designs and don't look at the neighborhood as a neighborhood, but as a, an opportunity to accomplish their own selfish desires for crime through drugs and crime, break-ins, robberies, knifings. And do you, do you have concerns about the addition of another outlet on Park Avenue?
So, and just so everybody's aware, there are 16 licensed liquor locations from 24th Street, from Leavenworth to 36th Street, and then just on Park Avenue, from Leavenworth to Woolworth Avenue. So I can show you a map if you'd like, but ultimately, there are several that are spread out throughout the area. I don't know if that'll zoom in or not for you. But you can see where those are located on there. So there are several.
You can give that to the clerk too, and that'd be part of the record.
Okay, perfect. So there's several that are over there. And when we pull the data, I mean, our call load over in that area is extreme. When staffing permits, we run a BEAT unit. We have for years. It used to be a full-time unit that was staffed on the day shift and, of course, on the afternoon shift. But due to staffing levels and the, the decrease in some of the area crime, we have just do it when staffing is permitted. But ultimately, I mean, we, we can see where there's an uptick in some of the crimes that occur in that area.
And so to me, it makes no sense when you have such dramatic improvements, but still very much at risk in terms of the transition and the direction it could go. It makes no sense to, to put all that at risk by increasing the outlet, notwithstanding how responsible an operator this applicant may be in terms of not having license violations at his other locations. So I, I just don't see that I can support this. So thank you, Kathy. There was one of the opponents who testified she didn't understand quite how the density works. This body is a recommending body. We only make a recommendation to approve or to disallow or deny. The Liquor Control Commission ultimately decides. And the basis of their decision is whether the public convenience and necessity justifies the addition of a license. So that's how they decided. There are no caps on the number of licenses that, that can be issued in the state. Our Supreme Court has told us that. It's a, whether the public convenience and necessity is met, but there are other factors that I could enumerate that go down the list in term, in terms of already meeting the existing needs of the neighborhood for terms of the density, the, the demographics in terms of crime and the issues we've talked about. And I think, to me, when you add all those up, it just doesn't justify adding another one there. So notwithstanding the quality of, of the individual who may be applying or the advocacy of his fine attorney, I, I would make a motion to deny.
Moving second to deny, to deny Ms. Melton. I wasn't gonna let you get that.
But thank you. And this is one, and this is what I wanna, this is what I want to say. I'm not sure what this is going to be. I'm not convinced that this isn't going to be a liquor store that sells food over a grocery store that may sell liquor. You know, I lived at 56th and Leavenworth for many years and walked down to Walner's, you know, a couple times a week and got my groceries. So if I was convinced this was going to be a Walner's with good, healthy food, a place where people might go and eat, just like what, you know, and I'm not trying to plug a specific grocery store, but I'm thinking of one that was nearby, you know, sold wine that, that is, costs more than $10 a bottle and, and that kind of thing, I would be more supportive. Right now, I'm just not sure what it looks like. So I think right now, I'm not convinced that this is the right place for this store because I'm not convinced of what kind of store this is. And I, you may not want to take the chance of the investment, of investing, but I can tell you that if you opened something that provided food and, and meals in a cafe, like the marketplace that Hy-Vee's have done or the Walner's in Midtown has done, right, you know, you can go in and have lunch and have coffee on Saturday mornings and things like that, but yet you're gonna have a small section of liquor, I could support that. But right now, I, and I understand the neighbors are probably in the same boat, if that was built and you showed the neighbors that this was a great neighborhood place, good food, and the kids want to walk down there and get ice cream or, or something like that, like the Walner's where I used to take my kids when they were little, I would support it, and I think you'd probably get the neighborhood support. Right now, they don't know what it looks like. They're afraid of what it may be, and I'm not convinced that that's what it will be. So I guess what I'm saying is I may be a no vote now, but I'd be a yes vote later.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Mr. President. For many of you, I live about 130 blocks to the west, you know, and the ironic thing about, she's talking about Walner's, when I was a principal, I had the owner's daughter in one of my schools out in Millard. So the world is, but I'm gonna tell you a bit, a little bit about the, the neighborhood. Now, I do occasionally go to Bud's and Alderman's. So I, I'm not, I can't say I'm guilty, but I do partake. But also have my, I use one of my cars at Stars. I don't know if you know Renee on the, the auto dealer or garage? Great guy. And I'm telling you, he, he's, so I take one of my cars there, just to let you know. And when I need some medical supplies, I do go to the Coles there on Leavenworth. And this morning, if you would have been at the Leavenworth Cafe at 6:00, you could have seen me eating breakfast. And I do like this part of town, I, 'cause I do see, like, it's, it's reinvented in itself. So although I, I have some of the same feelings that Councilwoman Melton does, I don't know for sure what this is all about. I'm not against, like I said, places like Bud's or Alderman's, but perhaps we have enough at the moment. But you do have sort of a unique neighborhood, and like I say, Renee at Stars gives me one heck of a deal when I take one of my cars in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although I don't live in this neighborhood either, I live much closer than my colleague to my left. I still live in South Omaha. So I guess for me, if I were go to, want to pick up some groceries, and this is a question for the applicant, if he could come up here, please. If I wanted to get some groceries, I may have to get in my car or possibly my bike, depending on the day, and I would pick out the, the store where I'm gonna find what I need the most. Now, I know the density's a little different here, so hopefully you have some walkers or some bike traffic to get there. But I looked on the map, and you have a position of a, another store very close, almost to the west of you, and then obviously you have a big, a bigger store just to the north of you. So what are you gonna do different in this neighborhood that we've already heard is pretty saturated with liquor licenses, to pull those people who are close to buy from your store? Is your food prices gonna be less? Is the, the type or product gonna be a higher quality? I mean, what, what's gonna bring the neighbors who, because of the density, are gonna be close to you, to your store, to your establishment?
Yeah, usually, okay.
Usually, we are bringing the convenience store or the grocery store to the neighborhood. It's not because of quality, but it is more convenient to them. Few women, they came to me, what it will be is, it's gonna be a grocery store. Oh, thus be nice. We walk five, six blocks to Leavenworth to get, especially on the wintertime. We do not have a car, but we walk down there. If you bring this to us, that'd be a lot helpful. They really appreciate it and they eager to see that. So most of, in the area, when I ask them, they are very eager. And like I said earlier, most of the product is gonna be a grocery store, fresh meat, milk, bread. So it's not because of quality difference than others, but it's just to bring it more convenient to them.
Okay. And then one more question, 'cause there was a couple differences in the percentage. What, I, I know with any store, you're gonna need cooler space and, and a way to preserve this product. So hopefully you have that intact, but what is the percentage of food sales that you're gonna have? I want to hear it from you.
Yeah. Yeah. What the plan I have for now is like ten percent produce, milk, meat, it's like about ten percent or fifteen percent, and other like cereal, chips, candy, those are the same, like ten, fifteen percent. That's what I set up. So when I go into all, into the item like miscellaneous, I come up with a beer, wine, if I included, it's gonna be like ten, fifteen percent.
Okay, those percentages don't quite add up, but that's a better, I should ask that, percentage of the liquor. So ten to fifteen percent is, is gonna be the liquor sales?
Yes. Let's show you down here to more.
You don't have to be exact. I'm just looking for a rough number here.
Yeah.
You finished, Mr. Palermo? Okay, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I had a question on clarification. I thought I'd heard fifty percent, but you're saying fifteen percent. Is that correct? So that, and then I think some of the testimony was that you have a, you have a separate location that I think you've had in operation for a number of years in a different location?
Mm-hmm. I do.
And that, is that more of a convenience store or is that a grocery store as well?
This is a convenience store.
That's a convenience store?
Mm-hmm.
So how, how big is that store?
It is, it's not that much big.
Is it, this, this, this location appears to be about thirty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah, this is a lot bigger.
What's that?
This is eleven oh seven Park Avenue is a lot bigger.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There, there are no more lights. It's been moved in second. And let me, I just wanted, if, if you don't mind, let me take an opportunity to just give some perspective here for a minute. First of all, let me compliment the neighbors, my colleague to my left, our vice president, for the work that they have done in this particular area. And I want to compliment the police department as well, because I had on, in those high-rises, I was on Omaha Housing Authority, and I had a father-in-law that lived in that building. And as bad as you all think it was, it's far worse, far worse. Having a relative there and the things that went on, not only in that high-rise, but around that area, you, it, it was, there are no words to describe how bad it was, and you all have tried to articulate it, but it was horrible. And there were rules that were made by the federal government that did nothing but more harm to especially the seniors that lived in that high-rise. Let me also compliment the, the applicant here as well, because you all look at Fortyth and Maple, and you look at it from a perspective of the way it looks now, and it's not great. I will, I will admit to that. But at, but prior to him getting that property, we had a city administration and a police chief that, for whatever reason, didn't believe we had a gang problem, even when many of us tried to tell them that they did. And this gentleman moved in because on Fortyth and, and Maple, at that point in time, from the mid-eighties till about the, close to two thousands, that was almost gang central. So what you have done there is not, I mean, it's, it's not what I would like to see, but it's significantly better on Fortyth and Maple than it was. The violence has been curtailed in that area, especially around where your business is. So I compliment you for doing that, even though it doesn't look the way others think it ought to look, nor does it look the way I think it should look, quite frankly. But what has happened in that area as a result of you being there has been better for that area than what the previous owner had brought in, because that, trust me, as being involved in gang, at, working with gang members, I understand what that area was before you took it over. I understand how bad Park Avenue was prior to our vice president getting on the council and our captain being involved over there now. It is a much better situation than it, than it was when I was there, when my family, when I had a family member there, and I was on Omaha Housing Authority there, addressing many of the problems that existed in that area. So I say that to say, while I like what I've seen on Fortyth and Maple, and I know people on that, that's why I wanted to give people perspective of what it, what it was versus what it is. Now, it should be better. You and I both know that.
Thank you.
But it's much better than what it was. But because of what I have seen personally on Park Avenue, I, I just, I, and, and for, for reasons other than just, you know, I, I try to support my colleagues on the council, but in this particular instance, I'm, I'm gonna support my vice president, number one, but I'm gonna support him primarily because I was in that area for a significant period of time as a, as a family member of someone who lived in that high-rise, as well as a member of Omaha Housing Authority. And that place just, quite frankly, doesn't need liquor license at this point. I just can't do it. But I, but I do, I didn't, I wanted to give some perspective, and I wanted to compliment you on Fortyth and Maple, because people will disparage it, but it's a hundred times better than it was about ten years ago. With that, it's been moved in second to deny the license. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Move to approve.
Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-six through twenty-eight are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items, numbers twenty-nine through fifty-three, are today. If you wish to city, if we, if you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number that you wish to address, then identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
These are consent items. Yours is coming up. Twenty-nine to fifty-three.
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. For right now, I'm opposing items forty through forty-five, because maybe I don't understand them, but it sounds to me like the city is involved in helping some people refurbish their homes or remove lead, but not everybody. It talks about people that actually own the property. It doesn't say the city owns it. So please explain why we're doing that.
You don't under, you don't, yes, that's correct. You don't understand. It's, they had, there's a project that's been, just, just for your information, there's, there's, we've been, we're a, we're a, we're a superfund site, and there are areas across the city.
Is this Omaha Land Bank stuff, or?
No, 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 no. Let, let me explain it to you offline.
Well, wait a minute. The state constitution says something about special laws. Please explain it. Okay, go ahead.
We are a super.
In better, more clear language, though, please.
I don't know how much clearer I can make it, but I'll, I'll attempt to. We are, the, the city of Omaha, the, the, especially the, the eastern portion of the city, has been a superfund site. By that, it means the EPA has come in, they've determined that because of a number of events that have occurred around our area that have caused lead to be in the soil.
Oh, I apologize.
We are obligated to, we are obligated as a city to remediate that, and the, and the EPA is obligated to pay us for doing that.
All right, I apologize.
So these dollars, yeah, so these dollars are, yeah, it's a federal program, and these dollars are coming from the federal government that we're using to remediate these homes that didn't get remediated during their initial tenure phase of the project.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. Is there a motion? Mr. Harding, you got, you got a light on? Okay, I didn't see it. It disappeared.
It disappeared.
Go ahead, Mr.
All right, thanks. I just wanted to make a clarification on item number thirty-two. There was, I think we received an, an item or a letter notification of opposition. I, I talked to the person that wrote that letter, and they were confused about the location. So I, I think their opposition was, was, she didn't need to continue with the opposition, knowing that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion, motion, is there a motion in a second? Yes, moved in second to approve items twenty-nine through fifty-three. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-nine through fifty-three are approved, seven to zero. Item fifty-four, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter eighteen, by creating a new article to prohibit the use and distribution of single-use plastic carryout bags at certain retail business establishments. A is an amendment of the whole requested by the law department. B is an amendment of the whole requested by council member Festerson. C is communications and support. D, communications and opposition. E is documentation received from Liz Burkle-Luddy, City Council Staff Assistant.
Thank you. The public hearing on agenda item number fifty-four will continue today. We'll start with proponents. Sophie Walenta.
My name is Sophie Walenta. Do I need to give my address? Okay, seven forty-three J. U. George Boulevard. As of yesterday, I am a graduate of Central High School and Omaha Henry Dolly Zoo Academy. Much of my time spent was studying the effects of single-use plastics and their contribution to our planet's overall decline. As a student ambassador for the Hefty Energy Bag Program, I spoke with many members of Omaha's community about the benefits of this program. I've participated in cleanups around the city where I've picked up no shortage of plastic bags. I also wrote a seventeen-page bill for the plastic bag ban as a junior in high school. My education has provided me with an in-depth knowledge of how single-use plastics affect us globally, nationally, and locally. This past Sunday was my eighteenth birthday, a day for celebration, and I spent part of the day thinking on what I should say here today. It is upsetting to me that my first steps into adulthood were spent advocating for my right to see adulthood through, for I am concerned about the state of our earth. There is a misconception that our distance from the ocean means that we do not exacerbate its plastic problem, but this is false. Rivers lead to the ocean, and everything matters. And the trajectory of these bags is not only to the sea, but to our lands and agricultural resources as well. Microplastics, the versions of these bags that have been broken down and entered the food chain, have most certainly landed on my table and yours as well. The magnitude of this issue and my personal experiences with it are what have brought me here today. The Omaha area is now at a crossroads to either evolve from our mistakes or continue them. With my generation inheriting these environmental problems, I can tell you which path I would like to take. I head off to college in Miami next fall to study marine biology. I'll be immersed in a community of people that deals with the detrimental effects plastics have on our oceans and marine life, and will be myself actively fighting for these solutions. I hope that when I move there, I can be proud to be from a city that has committed to fighting for solutions alongside me, rather than remaining a part of the problem in spite of me. So I ask you to please vote in favor of this plastic bag ban today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next proponent, Kate, Caitlin Openhaver. Did I say that right?
Uh, Copenhagen.
Copenhagen, okay. I'm sorry.
It's all good.
Okay.
Uh, my name is Caitlin Copenhagen. Hello and good afternoon, and my address is six five two six North One Hundred Fifty-Eighth Street, and I'm a student of also Zoo Academy and Duchenne Academy. For all the times I can remember my parents dragging me unwillingly to the grocery store as a kid, I can't seem to remember very many in which we were offered paper rather than plastic bags. I mean, it's just kind of a standard of life. Plastic bags are easy to use, single-use, they're convenient, and lightweight. However, these very appealing factors are actually belying the problem with plastic bags, which is the ineffectiveness of their, the ineffectiveness of their disposal. So we can throw away as many plastic bags as we want, but their lightweight allows them to be turned into a sort of kite to be carried off, as Sophie said, to the oceans, to our fields. They get all over the place. One thing I can remember very vividly from being a kid is seeing all these plastic bags flying around and thinking how gross it was to see them around our beautiful city. So by banning plastic bags from Omaha, we will also be able to remove the hazards of their disposal, improve people's health, keep our environment pristine, and find better, better alternatives. Approximately five trillion plastic bags are made worldwide every year. That's a lot of garbage. Now, the disposal process is already extremely difficult due to the aforementioned wind problem, but the, if the bags do happen to land in the landfill, it can take up to a thousand years to biodegrade. They're not really biodegradable, I guess, I guess, to decompose. I'm sorry for that. Anyway, they're made of polyethylene, so that lasts quite a long time. And Waste Management reports that only about one percent of plastic bags are returned to recycle. So that means the majority of them are getting carried off to our environment or ending up in the landfills where they'll last for up to a thousand years, which are not good situations. Plastic, as Sophie mentioned, is also getting into our food. In oceans, fish consume tiny microplastics, and through the process of biomagnification, which is where pollutants become more and more concentrated from consumer to consumer up the food chain. So this occurs, and so in a study, a hundred and fourteen marine species were found to have these microplastics in their stomachs, and over half of these were consumed as seafood. So I'm glad I don't like seafood personally. From a more local standpoint, plastic is entering our farm fields. If these microplastics get into our rivers and soil, what will stop them from getting into our produce? As the cornhuskers, I believe that we should protect our namesake from the dangers of plastic pollution. So every day, we see plastic bags stuck in trees, in our lakes, and flying in the wind due to failure in being able to dispose of them properly. Nobody wants their city to be filled with trash. For new people moving to Omaha, it would be so unpleasant for them to arrive here and see these plastic bags flying around. It is also appealing to businesses. According to Keep American Beautiful, thirty-six percent of business development officials say that litter impacts the decision to locate to a community, so that's an economic benefit. Removing plastic bags would make Omaha a cleaner and more beautiful place to live. So as we've seen, plastic bag disposal is ineffective and harmful to people, animals, and the environment.
Okay, let me get you to wrap up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, we're trying, I didn't, I forgot to let people know, too, we're trying to do three minutes per person.
Oh, okay. So by banning plastic bags will take a step in the right direction of keeping Omaha happy and healthy and beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, and I'm gonna torture some of these names, Luke, Lucas Longer?
Longer.
Longer? I completely tore that up, didn't I? Okay. You'll say it right. Name an address for the record.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Lucas Longer, living at five oh eight North Fillmore Street, and I am representing students from Westside High School, a part of Students for Sustainability. I am here to urge the members of the council to support the ban the bag ordinance. Plastic bags are a public health hazard. Many know of plastic bags' danger to marine life. Around one hundred thousand marine creatures are killed by plastic entanglement each year, though through the pollution of our waterways and oceans by plastic bags, humans are also affected. Plastic bags do not decompose, though they do break down into little fragments that are then consumed by wildlife. Plastics in our oceans absorb pollutants such as polychlorinated biphenol and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. These compounds are known to cause health-related issues, including cancer. So when marine life ingests these plastics, the chemicals absorbed by them eventually end up in humans who consume fish or other marine organisms. Now, even if you don't eat fish, plastic bag toxins can still make their way into your blood and tissue through our groundwater. Landfills are filled with tons of plastic bag waste. The chemicals in plastic bags seep into our soil and make their way into groundwater. The Ogallala Aquifer is an important source of water, and a major portion of the aquifer is located in Nebraska. Plastic bags that end up in Nebraskan landfills then cause chemicals to seep into this aquifer, directly causing toxins to end up in our drinking water. Tap water has been shown to contain microplastic, thus meaning the chemicals of plastic bags end up in the water we drink. Landfills aren't the only source causing chemicals to seep into our soil and pollute our groundwater. Sewage sludge is also a factor. Sewage sludge is used as fertilizer by Nebraskan farmers, though many do not realize that plastic particles are contained by sewage and, end up in this sewage sludge. Omaha provides its sewage sludge to Nebraskan farmers. The sludge, which still contains plastics, is then used as fertilizer, which means thousands of tons of microplastics end up in our soil each year. For the reasons I have mentioned, Omaha has a responsibility to protect public health by reducing our plastic bag waste. This ban can do This ban can do that. I close by again urging this council to support the Ban the Bag Ordinance. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my testimony, and thank you for our service to our community.
Thank you. Next up is Ann Hubbard.
Good afternoon. I'm Ann Hubbard, four five three two South one hundred and sixty-third Street. I live on the south side of Lake Zirinsky. I'm a retired physician. I spent thirty-five years working in pediatric healthcare and doing clinical research. There is no question that there is an association in between our health and the health of our environment. And as the kids have just told you, there is increasing evidence that microplastics are becoming part of our environment and becoming part of the food chain. So we are ingesting that. Part two, because I live on the south side of Lake Zirinsky and I have two dogs, I'm out there walking all the time. And as a walker, I am appalled in the upper-middle-class neighborhood that I live in that there is so much plastic crap out there. I'm picking up, I have a minimum pickup that I do every day, but there are days that you just get tired of picking up the trash. And you would think people in my neighborhood pick the trash up. They don't even pick up the trash. It's right in front of the trash can or right in front of their mailbox that they have to cross in front of every day. This winter, after this hard winter, the amount of trash that was at Lake Zirinsky was enormous. And not only do I walk on the lake, I kayak on the lake. So my friends and I that go out kayaking, we pick up trash every day that we kayak. Each day we'll come back with at least one trash bag, big trash bag full of trash, which is mainly plastic bags, styrofoam cups, and then other pieces of styrofoam. So I think the ban on plastic is an important place to start on looking at the amount of plastic load we have in our, in our life in general. I've had the opportunity to travel extensively around the world. Rwanda was the first country to eliminate plastic bags. They did that in two thousand eight. I was there in two thousand ten. It's the cleanest country I've ever been to, and that's a middle-income African country that was able to ban plastics, plastic bags. They started with community projects, cleanup projects in two thousand four and worked up to a complete ban in two thousand eight. They are now, this year, going to completely ban single-use plastics from their country. You know, it's not that hard to eliminate plastics. I can't tell you how many of these reusable bags I have. I've never paid for a single one of them. You get them at any event you go to, you get a reusable plastic bag. They're, because people say it's gross to use them, they're washable. People say, oh, you forget to take them with you. Well, some friends of mine, ten years ago, gave me a bag like this. If you can carry it in your purse, it folds out to a full-size bag for those times you walk into Walgreens and forgot your bags. Again, washable. So there's lots of ways that we could help reduce plastics, but it's an important place for us to start with the ban.
Thank you. Next is Elaine Wells.
My name is Elaine Wells. I'm at five zero zero five Reed Street. I was going to give a long dissertation, but everybody else who's preceded me has done such a good job, I'm going to eliminate that and just say that I hope that Omaha will become a leader in environmental protection rather than holding out for the old ways for the rest of this decade or the rest of this century. Let's, let's do it right now and be ahead of the curve.
Thank you. Next up is Kate Kelly.
My name is Kate Kelly, and I live at four seven one seven North Adia Street. I am in Councilman Festerson's district. I am here to urge the members of the council to support the Ban the Bag Ordinance. First and foremost, plastic bags are a great risk to not only public health but the environment of our city. As a great plain city, we are blessed with fertile soil and farmland, all of which is aided by the many streams, lakes, and rivers that surround us. It is well-known that plastic bags commonly block local drainage systems and release toxins into the water. These chemicals and microplastics are a threat to our bodies, our agriculture, and the livelihoods of the animals that we share our space with. Direct toxicity from plastics comes from lead, cadmium, and mercury. Other toxins in plastics are directly linked to cancers, birth defects, immune system problems, and childhood developmental issues. I don't know of any citizen who would support the continued use of these bags that have obvious detrimental effects. In fact, every peer, friend, and adult that I've spoken to always says something along the lines of, just get rid of them. Though plastic bags give the illusion of being able to be recycled, recycling rates for plastic bags average around seven percent. Furthermore, plastic bags aren't free. Retailers pay the bags and they pass that cost on to customers. The plastic bag industry collects four billion per year in profits from the U.S. retailers. So why are we paying for a useless product when plastic bags are not the only available product for shoppers and consumers? Paper and reusable bags can be both reused, paper used for recycling purposes, as we do in my house, and reusable bags are both sturdier and larger. It seems pointless to continue to allow stores to put every purchase in plastic bags so frequently without thought of consequence. There comes a time when convenience can no longer be the first priority. Our environment, our earth, and our public health must come before a wasteful convenience. I ask this council to consider today, why are we allowing this to go unregulated in our community and city? As a young person, I'm a junior at Mercy High School. I don't want to continue living in a place where I commonly see plastic bags and trees at the park, blowing across the road, or floating in water. And as a young person, this is a problem that we will continue to stand up against until it is resolved. I close by again urging this council to support the Ban the Bag Ordinance. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my testimony today.
Thank you. Next up is Patricia Fuller.
Patricia Fuller, twenty-six Pickard Lane, Council Bluffs, Iowa. I'm a member of OTAC's Environmental Sustainability Team and a member of Sacred Heart Church in Omaha. I'm going to eliminate most of what I was going to say, make this very brief because it's already been said, but a study by the University of Georgia estimates that eight million metric tons of plastic end up in our oceans each year. This figure could increase tenfold in ten years if no action is taken. We know that the mayor and retailers would prefer voluntary recycle, recycling measures. If voluntary measures worked, we wouldn't have this many tons of plastic entering our oceans. The Great Pacific Garbage Patch would not be twice the size of Texas now. OTAC believes that all life is linked together and that how we consume has a wide global impact, and we must address the amount of plastic we produce and discard. I do thank Omaha Councilmen for introducing this ban. I think it's very progressive, and I wish Iowa could do the same thing, but they have passed a law that the city can do their own ban, so I really appreciate this effort.
Thank you. Next is Kathy Jeffers.
Kathy Jeffers, fifty-seven oh six one hundred and seventy-third Avenue. I'm an OTAC member also, along with twenty-six churches and solidarity organizations. We together research and participate in actions like today. We are in favor, we are in favor of the ban of the one-time plastic bag use ordinance proposed by Councilwoman Pete Festerson and Council President Ben Gray. This ordinance begins to address the use of plastic, which contributes to the waste stream, as you've heard so far, and affects our well-being. It doesn't just go away. You'll hear from opponents to this ban who spend enormous amounts of money to ensure their economic interests go on as usual. Omaha has the opportunity to join other wise cities and countries to challenge the industry, to find new ways to face this issue, to help us all breathe better air. As consumers, we can become increasingly dependent on plastic that causes these environmental issues, as been mentioned, but as taxpayers, we also pay for them. The cleanup of our cities, parks, and city area home landscapes. Changing habits doesn't happen easily. It is a mindful effort to switch to reusable bags because the reusable bags do need to be cleaned to keep germs at bay, but with time, we'll make everybody's future better. Thank you very much for the time to speak.
Thank you. Next up is Becky App. Is Becky here? Okay.
My name is Becky App, eleven twenty-four North Happy Hollow. I'm with E Creamery Ice Cream and Gelato. I'm here to express my support of a ban on all retail plastic bags. As a small retail business owner, I know firsthand that cost-effective, environmentally-friendly options are readily available from Omaha sources. It's a very simple switch that has the long-term benefit to our environment that far outweighs any temporary inconvenience of us retailers sourcing an alternative, non-plastic bag option. Thanks for your work on making Omaha a more responsible, environmentally-friendly city.
Thank you. Next is David Corbin.
I do have some slides to show, so I want to open that.
David, I'm going to keep time up here too, because that's not working there.
Don't start it yet.
Don't start it yet. Okay, all right. Let me reset and then you.
Okay, I got to find. Slide. Sorry. David Corbin, ten oh two North Forty-Ninth Street. I'm the chair of the Nebraska Chapter Sierra Club. The Sierra Club is the largest environmental organization in the United States. We serve to promote, protect, and enjoy the environment. I'm just going to go through these really quickly to note that there is not a wildlife organization that I know of in the world that says plastic bags are good. So I start with the cover of the National Geographic that showed the plastic bag on the cover. These are pictures of plastic bags. I don't have time. If I were to click that link right there, I could show you bag after bag after bag after bag. All of these pictures are taken in Omaha of littered plastic bags. Even our poet laureate, who was from Nebraska, wrote a children's book called Bag in the Wind, calling attentions to the problems with plastic bags. You'll probably hear from someone else, but we have over nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-five online petition signers, as well as several thousand paper signers. The Gateway, the UNO newspaper called for support of it, and Mayor Stautter's own online survey, when she put it out there, the majority of the people favored a ban. I should point out that originally it was, just to give a little historical, we proposed a fee and, and the mayor says, no, let's ban them. We agree. So I, oops, going backward here. Just real quickly, plastic never goes away, plastic piles up in the environment, plastic spoils our groundwater, plastic poisons our food chain, plastic attracts other pollutants. So it's not just the plastic itself, but if there's other chemicals in the water, it adheres to that, that makes the things that you heard earlier even worse. Affects human health, you've already heard. I'm a public health professional for over three decades. It threatens wildlife, as you've heard over and over, and I've said, there's no wildlife organization around that says plastic bags should be around, and it costs billions of dollars to abate. Two studies recently came out, plastic in the climate. Remember, plastic comes from fossil fuels, and that's a lot of fossil fuels. I would highly recommend both of these studies to you, plastic in health and plastic in climate. One just came out last week. And so often described as the world number-one consumer product, as well as the most ubiquitous, shopping bags are now among the world's most banned. Hundred and twenty-seven nations, many communities, many states. And so any solution that reduces plastic production use is a strong strategy for addressing climate impacts, climate crisis that we are in right now. Why plastic bags? As mentioned earlier, it's a start. Nobody thinks this is going to solve all of our environmental issues, but in terms of wildlife and in terms of comparing to what you'll hear of opponents saying all of these things, if you're talking about wildlife and human health, this is not a product you want to have. Please support the ban.
Thank you. Next is Mary Wells. Is Mary here? I think Mary left, because she was with the other group. Amber Posh. Amber's not here. Michael O'Hara. Come on down, Michael.
Hello, I'm Michael O'Hara. I'm lobbyist for the Sierra Club, address sixty thirty-five Binney. I want to thank you for introducing this bill, or this ordinance, and for following the mayor's suggestion to ban, instead of put a fee, and follow the mayor's suggestion to broaden it. We support Agenda Item Fifty-four B. We're approaching Memorial Day, and one of the things you're certain to hear is freedom is not free, nor are plastic bags. Plastic bags are only free in one sense. Economically, you're going to encounter many, many costs, and you are going to be the people paying that cost in terms of city operations, and we would like to stop that. You'll see things as like it's one percent of the garbage. Well, actually, it depends on how you count. One percent of weight, maybe. One of the surveys you're given in the Extra Communications has it highlighted as point eight percent, but when you add up the different types of plastic listed in it, it's actually three percent. Numbers will be all over the place. Reduce, reuse, repurpose, recycle, that's actually in state statute, and one of the things you should do is just reduce having this type of pollution. The county commission earlier heard on repurposing it with the orange bag. Recycling, one argument I've heard is that maybe twenty percent are recycled. That means eighty percent of the problem is not being addressed. Rarely will you hear someone say, do not address the problem because a small minority of the problem is being addressed. The comments were already made. In turn, one comment in the newspaper was, we should let the entrepreneurial power bring us a solution. I certainly believe in that. I'm an economist. The waste as a form of an input is the idea behind reuse, repurpose, and if you are competing with an input that is free and falsely free, it's very difficult to compete with it. If you were to ban this noxious item, then you would find that there would be more entrepreneurs who would step up. Reducing your costs and increasing your sales tax revenue, I find hard to perceive as a bad idea. I'd like you to vote in favor, and I'm a constituent of Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you. Next is Kelly Newell. Kelly Newell.
Good afternoon. My name is Kelly Newell. I live at three five two six South Forty-Eighth Avenue. I own a clothing store called Scout Dry Goods and Trade in the Dundee neighborhood, five zero one eight Underwood. We're a bring-your-own-bag store, and we have been for the last eleven years. It's great for our bottom line. It doesn't affect anything. In fact, we're saving money. Lots of times we just ask people if they need a bag or a receipt, and they say, no, actually, I'm parked right outside. And just that little bit of a pause is all they need to start thinking a little bit differently. This time last year, we started the petition that David brought up, the online petition on change.org. We have almost ten thousand signatures. That was sent over to the clerk. It's a four hundred and sixty-four page PDF that we did not print out. Save some trees, of course. So I think that what that shows is enthusiastic support for this type of ban in Omaha. People really want it. I think the time is now to make this, make, take this action. Please, I just, I, this is not an issue that's going to go away. I know that I've been, I've been working with a lot of students, the student councils, lots of schools, talking on sustainability. This is an issue that this generation feels very passionate about, and if it doesn't pass today, I just, I know that it's going to, we're going to keep fighting. So I please ask you to support the ban and, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Catherine Carroll. Catherine Carroll. Okay. Marisa Beal. Marisa Beal here. Okay. Angela Part C S C. I wasn't even gonna try that one, so. Thank you, Angela.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name's Angela Partush. I live at 6535 South 108th Avenue, but I'm here on behalf of Duchenne Students and Students for Sustainability. And I am here to urge the members of the council to support the Ban the Bag Ordinance. At Duchenne, I was lucky enough to be informed on the environmental crisis that is happening in our world right now. This awareness has transformed into a passion and an activism. I'm taught to have a global mindset and to know that all my actions have consequences. And at Duchenne, I've learned the importance of limiting waste through sustainable efforts such as composting, reducing energy, and simply being aware of what I waste. And even though Duchenne may be ahead on the sustainability front, that does not stop Omaha from being behind. I walk out of my school to the Walmart down the street and see hundreds of plastic bags being used. I drive to school and see them flying around on the interstate, and it is not enough to have only passionate individuals limiting plastic waste. We need the whole city too, as well. Omaha needs to take a step in the green direction and ban plastic bags. OPPD's new energy efficiency program is progress, but Omaha is a big city. With over 450,000 people, we are able to host big events such as the College World Series and Olympic swim trials, but there's a responsibility that comes with being such an influential city. We need to not only become a hub for college baseball, but for sustainability in the Midwest. Other places in the Midwest, such as Chicago and Washtenaw County, Michigan, have adopted a no-bag policy, not to mention the entire states of California, Hawaii, and New York. Even less developed countries such as Rwanda and Bangladesh have been aware of this problem for years. These places understand that we need to take substantial steps within the legislature to keep the world that we live in safe and clean, and Omaha must take those same steps. Lastly, we need councilmembers to set an example for us. Young people won't let this slide, and we'll keep fighting so that our kids, grandkids, and future generations will be able to live on a healthy and clean earth. Please listen to us, because we are fighting for our own future. I close again by urging the council to support the Ban the Bag Ordinance. Thank you for the time, taking the time to listen to my testimony.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Juliana Angel.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Juliana Angel, living at 810 North 69th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, and Councilmember Festerson's district. I am proud to call Omaha my home because of our kindness and respect for one another, because of our community's ability to come together and support one another, and because of our beautiful city. I'm here to urge the members of the council to support the Ban the Bag Ordinance. We know that banning plastic bags has decreased waste in other communities, so I wonder why you would not want to move forward in the efforts to preserve our city and our planet by supporting this ordinance? Is it because we need the convenience of a plastic bag, or because they are cheap to produce? Are cheap production and convenience more important than our community's health and future? When you allow the use of something that is toxic to our people and our environment, you are telling us that you value convenience and profit over us. While it is easy to look around and say, what about them? That city isn't doing it, why should we? Today could just as easily be the day that we choose to make ourselves leaders in the Midwest and in the nation, to tell our farmers and communities who are being damaged by this toxic pollution that you care. We are all here because we are afraid. We are afraid for our future and for the future of generations to come. However, this fear will not paralyze us, and it will not make us silent. Our concern has motivated us to become leaders, and it has made us stronger. One day, I want to be able to tell my children and the people in my life that I did everything in my power to preserve our life on earth. Will you be able to say the same? The youth of our community has stepped up and is asking you to protect us, to use your power and help our future. At this moment, we are standing here pleading for your help, because by the time we are old enough to sit in your place, if we have done nothing, it could be too late. Please understand that this is not something we will forget about, and not something that will blow over. We are aware, we are educated, and we are watching, because this is our future. How can we sit here, understanding the pollution and destruction we have caused, and not take responsibility for our actions? I ask you all, can you, can we afford not to pass this ordinance? I hope that my testimony and the testimony of my peers has made a difference in your decision. I ask again that you support the Ban the Bag Ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Sidney Rogers Morell.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Sidney Rogers Morell. I live at 2722 North 112th Avenue, and I'm a constituent of Councilmember Milton. I'm here today to urge the members of the council to support the Ban the Bag Ordinance. The negative impact of plastic bags is larger than the bundle that lives beneath most of our kitchen sinks. The negative impacts will affect everybody here today, and will outlive everybody in this room. The decisions we make today will be seen for generations to come. Single-use plastic bags take 1,000 years to decompose, and Americans use 100 billion of these bags every year, which breaks down to 280 million in the Omaha area alone. And while these bags are stamped with the recycle symbol, very often, they are not recycled properly, or at all. Plastic bags are not just impacting us here locally. #WeDon'tCoast, but through the use and improper disposal of these bags, we are severely impacting the coast. Studies have shown that 50% of dead sea turtles are found with plastic bags in their systems. And here locally, our wildlife in, our wildlife in interior lakes are affected by these hazards as well. If the ocean impact was not enough to sway you, there is a high economic impact as well. Many urban communities are having to pay high fees for litter removal, and trash bags have become a huge part of that problem. Some cities have had to pay upwards of $1 million for litter removal, and it's only getting larger. And I don't know about you, but I would prefer to stay known as the city with the best zoo, and not the city with the most plastic bags littering the grounds. I know the citizens of Omaha are ready for this change. As a former employee of Hy-Vee, I saw for three years just how much plastic bags Omaha citizens consume. I also, however, saw just how willing they were to make this switch. Many customers brought their own bags, would bring back the plastic bags to recycle, or perhaps didn't even use bags at all. I want to see Omaha be the city that leads the way for banning these bags in the Midwest. We no longer have the privilege of time to timidly wait for another city to be the leader in this. It is time for Omaha to be the leader. I'm entering my senior year here as a political science undergraduate at the University of Omaha, Nebraska, where this past year I served as the Sustainability Committee Chair Director. I have lived in Omaha my entire life, where I attended all Omaha Public Schools and graduated from Omaha Central High School in 2016, all of which I'm quick to boast about. I want to see Omaha take steps to preserve this world for the future generations who will hopefully love this city as much as I do. Supporting this ordinance is the first step in that. People have been asking me about my post-graduation plans and if I will be staying in Omaha. It is decisions made by this body that play a huge role in that decision. Councilmembers, you have the power to keep young Nebraskins here at home by listening to us here today and anytime that we speak up. I close my testimony today by once again urging you to support this ordinance. Thank you for your time and listening to me today.
Thank you. Next up is. Angelina. There you go. You. It's yours. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Enselma Huntongi, that's how you pronounce.
Thank you. I'll remember that.
Will you?
Probably not, but go ahead.
I live 5434 South 109th Q, Councilman Rich Pauls, I am your constituent. And I'm here representing students of District 5 and Students for Sustainability and support of the Ban the Bag Ordinance. The US alone uses 100 billion plastic bags per year, but only 1% of those bags are recycled, which means 99% of a billion bags are end up in landfills. A billion plastic bags takes 12 million barrels of oil to manufacture. That's 14 plastic bags for every mile you drive. Plastic bags take about 500 or more years to decompose, and by then, we're halfway through a millennia. Plastic bags break down into smaller bits called microplastic that are harmful and sometimes fatal to marine life. There are more microplastic in our ocean than there are in the Milky Way. Over 100 million marine life, birds, and other animals die each year from plastic trash. There are 5.25 trillion pieces of plastic debris in the ocean, and it's estimated that at the least 700 marine animals are affected by plastic pollution. We cannot stand by and continue to watch our government destroy our planet. I stand before you, not just as a bleeding-heart student, but as someone who really cares about the future of our country, and our nation, and our planet. This is a call to action. Everything we do has a consequence, and Omaha has the opportunity to make a big impact. What happens to our future depends on the small things that we do now. And I urge you to make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Matt Anderson.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Matthew Anderson, and I'm an ex-senior at Creighton Prep, living at 15707 Woolworth Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm a constituent of Rinker Harding's district. I'm here to urge the members of the council to support Ban the Bag Ordinance. Over time, plastic bags get into the soil and slowly release toxic chemicals. This affects our agriculture in Nebraska. Not only do plastic bags affect the agriculture community of Nebraska, but they in turn, in turn, harm the consumers, us. Oftentimes, we believe that plastic is only harmful when we can see it with our naked eye, but this is false. Between 107,000 to 730,000 tons of microplastic are added to European and North American farmlands each year. Not pounds, but tons. Oftentimes, plastic contamination on land is overshadowed by plastic contamination in the sea. In fact, plastic contamination on land is estimated to be between four to 32 times higher than in the oceans. We cannot continue to ignore this issue. I close again by urging this council to support Ban the Bag Ordinance. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my testimony, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next is Tori Bianco. Tori Bianco? Okay.
My name is Tori Bianco. I'm at 2444 South 183rd Circle. I am a graduate from Melkorn South High School in 2017, and I currently attend New York University. And I've always been passionate about protecting the environment, so hearing about this ban through social media and the petition that I found out through Scout Dry Goods, I was super excited to come back from studying abroad in Spain to see how this vote turned out. As a matter of fact, plastic bags come at a cost in Madrid, where I was studying, and that made me more inclined to bring my own bags. I kept one in my backpack all the time, and it became a part of my routine, and so was the same for my classmates. So making it harder to obtain single-use plastic bags is obviously effective. But nevertheless, the concerns about this ban have to do with convenience, but luckily, we live in a world of choice. Banning single-use plastic bags will relieve a burden from the environment, more so than it's gonna place a burden on consumers or businesses. From the pre-council meeting I listened to earlier this morning, I noticed that there was no mention of a manufacturer of plastic bags, or it was only the grocery stores and the retailers and the consumers. Therefore, from this knowledge, it wouldn't impact a single job in Omaha. Again, we are balancing our shopping convenience versus knowing the harm to our environment. Although gradual social change will come with time, we don't have forever. When we live in a planet with limited resources, carrying a burden of a consumer-driven society, the time to act is now, especially with a limited ban that is easy for the consumer as well as the store to adapt to. So as the city of Omaha, if we can make one little change that is codified into a policy, more change will ensue. Let's keep moving forward. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Michelle Brown. Michelle Brown? Okay. Is everybody named Michelle Brown?
Hello, my name is Michelle Brown. I am a science teacher at St. James Seaton Catholic School. The address of St. James Seaton Catholic School is 4720 North 90th Street. My home address is 5067 Belondo Street. Some of my fifth graders are here to talk to you today about why they support the plastic bag ban.
There you go.
Hello, my name is Kiana Caltenberg, and I'm 11 years old. By 2050, if plastic use keeps growing as expected, there will be more plastic in the ocean than fish. If that happens, when my dad and brother or anyone goes fishing, they could be catching plastic bags. That takes the fun away from fishing, especially if that was their hobby, and they could be catching fish.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lexi Olmstead, and I'm 11 years old. In 2050, when I'm 42, if plastic bags use are still as, still as much as it is today, that means that you'll be swimming in plastic, and that is not really something you would want to do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Avery Pecklow, and I'm 11 years old. There are 1 trillion plastic bags used each year around the world. 380 billion are consumed in the United States alone. That's almost 40% of the world's plastic bags used by us.
Thank you.
However, less than 5% of plastic bags are recycled. The average person in the US uses one plastic bag per day, and Denmark, they use four per person per year.
Thank you. Pull the mic down for you a little bit more, so you can hear you a little more. Yeah, you could pull them both down if you want. There you go.
Each year, thousands of sea turtles choke on plastic bags after mistaking them for jellyfish, a favorite food. Plastic trash can hurt animals and the earth. We need to take care of them because they're God's creation.
Hi, I'm Olivia Shroud, and I'm 11 years old. Over 90% of all seabirds have plastic in their stomachs. Plastic trash hurts animals, and that's not okay with me. Animals are living things too, and we need to do our part to protect them.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Hillebrand, and I am 10 years old. Plastic causes problems on land as well as on water. They don't biodegrade, taking up permanent space in landfills. That means every plastic bag ever made is still around. I am 10 years old. I have a long time on this earth left to live, and I want the world to be clean, not just for me, but for the generations after me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you all. Are there any other proponents who did not sign in to speak? Before we move to the proponents. I mean, proponents, has any proponent come in that have not, didn't sign in? All right, next to the opponents, and we will start with, I think this is Sheila Lowry? Sheila Lowry? I got it right? Okay.
Hi there, good evening. I'm Sheila Lowry, the Corporate Affairs Manager for our Dillon Stores Division, serving Dillons in Kansas, Bakers here in Nebraska, and Gerbs in Missouri. And together, we're a division of the Kroger Company. Our Bakers offices are located at 4509 South 143rd Street, Suite 4. So here, with great appreciation, I share my support for the forward-thinking conversations in Omaha. At Bakers, we agree with growing concerns about single-use plastic bags, especially with our zero-hunger, zero-waste vision. Therefore, we are leading the change, and we're committed to phasing out plastic bags in favor of reusable options by 2025. It's a positive step ahead. It's also a fundamental change with the way all retailers do business and us as consumers shop. On April 1st of 2019, our QFC Division, which includes 62 stores in the Pacific Northwest, became our first retail division to complete this process to eliminate plastic bags. We expect to learn so much from this process. We vow to listen to our customers and to our associates to share a more seamless experience as we continue on this plan. We, along with our customers, will need time to transition to a new and better way of doing things. That means adopting reusable bags, which we believe is the most sustainable option. Switching to paper is simply not enough. As you know, paper bags have their own environmental drawbacks. With these points in mind, we need time to work with our supply partners to ensure that we have the best reusable bag available. We know this transition also takes education and reminders for our customers to adopt these new, better ways of shopping. It also takes understanding on the part of how It also takes understanding on the part of how to properly clean those reusable bags to reduce the risks of cross-contamination. So we, as retailers, need all of your support along this journey. And we cannot assume what makes sense for one customer makes sense for everyone. We must respect the needs of all customers to avoid imposing undue burdens with any of our shoppers. So at Bakers, we currently train our associates to reduce the number of plastic bags at the checkout, and we're continuing to offer those recycling options to our customers. In fact, last year, with our eleven at Bakers stores, we were able to recycle more than a hundred and three tons of plastic. So zero hunger, zero waste is our purpose. It's our passion. In two thousand eighteen, we contributed more than one point three million meals with food rescued right from our stores, which was an increase of almost seventeen percent, while decreasing our impact to the landfills by nearly eight percent. So phasing out plastic bags requires a great deal of preparation on our part and on the part of our customers. And at Bakers, we're in a unique position because we have a plan. We have a vision in place. We're actively working towards that vision with a goal of eliminating plastic bags by two thousand twenty-five, and we would appreciate the flexibility to continue on that path. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Michael Leary. Michael Leary? Okay. Okay.
Uh, Michael Leary, nineteen twenty, North Eighty-first Street. Uh, I heard a lot of good, you know, good things from the kids here and that, but I don't know if they, uh, heard the recent change to the ordinance.
Yeah, dress us though.
How's that?
Thank you.
I don't know if they've, uh, heard the recent change to the ordinance. Uh, you think this is a plastic bag ban. It's not. He's excluding all retail space less than ten thousand square foot. That means there isn't a convenience store in this town that's ten thousand square foot. Come and Go calls them five K. They built one recently. They called a six K. That's six thousand square foot, five thousand square foot. The lady that back there that had a retail business, I don't think she's got ten thousand square foot. So they will still be able to provide these plastic bags. And that, you think you're banning them, you also put a limitation on them as far as the thickness. I just measured a bag from Walmart. It meets the measurement. It's, exceeds the measurement. You also said that you wanted the bags, if they're plastic, that they have to say they're reusable, recyclable. Bags, I've collected bags from every vendor around town, and they do say that on the bag. You gotta read it. That's what said last time. Educate the people not to litter.
Thank you. Are you, are you finished? Oh, I'm sorry.
Reusable bags. This is a reusable bag. It doesn't say reuse on it. It's also plastic coated. It's a plastic bag. It's reusable, and that was sent out by, we've got them from the Veterans Associations that have sent them out. Nowhere on this bag does it say it's reusable. This bag that they distribute ice in, and you're talking about bags getting in the streams and that, this is the bag that's getting in the streams. They're going to the park, they're littering with these, they're dumping their ice out, and they're littering with these. There's nothing in the ordinance that says this bag is eliminated. This bag here is provided by the city, in the city parks. It don't meet your specifications. The bag out there outside in the trash bin, the waste here, doesn't meet your specifications. And it's a single-use bag. I would hope it's single-use. Bags like this are a problem for your trash. Bag, this is part of your litter problem, what you're trying to get rid of. And this, which I'm sure, I don't know if you-
Yes, it's just a dress up.
I don't know if you guys are aware of what these are. I think some of the college students do. But this is a wrapper that you find all over town and in the parking lots that is being used to, uh, have their, uh, wacky tobacco added to so they can make their funny cigarettes, cigars. They're all over the place. Ban them.
You got about thirty seconds.
And then the disposable diapers, which you've all, all the younger ones have probably-
Talk to us. Talk to us.
Okay. The disposable diapers that you've all probably worn at one time or another is a bigger waste and a bigger fill in the landfills than those plastic bags. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Doug Kagan. Is Doug Kagan here? Did, okay, I'm sorry. Were you hiding from me in the back there, Doug?
Good afternoon. Doug Kagan, four sixteen South one hundred thirtieth Street, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. A recent study by the National Center for Policy Analysis found that plastic bag restrictions cost jobs. The NCPA surveyed store managers in Los Angeles County where a ban of thin film bags took effect in July two thousand eleven to verify a ban impact on revenues and employment. Workers in the plastic bag industry or bag recycling lost jobs. In the U.S., more than thirty thousand Americans are employed by the plastic bag manufacturing and recycling industry, according to the chairman of the American Progressive Bag Alliance. Bag bans and taxes put these jobs at risk at a time when we should be supporting the creation of new jobs. Bag ban proponents promised that a ban would encourage industry to quote "retool" and quote "retrain" workers to make a different product, yet no evidence of this trend has surfaced. Note that American companies manufacture plastic bags. Most paper bags come from Asia. Companies recycle tens of millions of pounds of plastic bags. The rate of plastic bag recycling increases each year with help from the American plastic bag manufacturing and recycling industries. Ban proponents seek to stop businesses from offering a free product to customers and stop customers from receiving a fine, a free service that we have enjoyed unwarranted government intrusion. Local ban ordinances create a patchwork of regulations that increase costs and make it difficult for businesses to comply with varying requirements within areas. We might expect next from such micromanagers of our daily lives an effort to ban styrofoam cups, straws, napkins, plastic water bottles, or plastic garbage bags. Sponsors decry plastic bag litter, yet they seek to penalize all consumers for the poor behavior of a few litter bugs. There are still so many exception, exemptions in this proposal that both customers and businesses will become confused about permitted bags and those not allowed. Bag bans intend to control people and their attitudes. No matter that there is no qualitative improvement in the environment, no matter that plastic bags are a tiny part of a larger problem, actually, paper bags cause more landfill waste than plastic bags and degrade very slowly because of compaction. No matter that freedoms and small businesses trod upon, only that a few public officials can control citizen behavior and force residents to adopt what they can- consider a green lifestyle, whether they like it or not, condescending to citizens they believe not intelligent enough to make our own decisions. A ban meddles with the free market. Conclusion, Omaha should prompt private entities to educate citizens about the hazards of littering and plastic bags following the landscape and storm sewers. Enforce anti-littering ordinances, including heavier fines. Publicize recycling and reuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, next up is Kevin... Gomez. Is that Gomez? Okay, thank you. Kevin Gomez.
All right. Uh, good afternoon, council. My name, as was mentioned, Kevin Gomez. I'm an instructor of economics at Creighton University uh, and program manager for the Institute for Economic Inquiry at Creighton University. Uh, that said-
Address, please.
Um, oh, and my address is, uh, one thousand nine Jones Street.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, but that said, these views are mine and not reflecting, uh, reflecting the university or the institute. So of course, um, I come to you regarding this ordinance. Um, I urge you to vote no against this ordinance. Uh, bans are ineffective if by solving one problem, they create new ones that are empirically worse. Uh, when these bans are implemented, studies show several unintended effects. We see a dramatic uptick in the purchase of garbage bag liners, thus not really solving the plastic bag problem. Uh, we see a rise in health risks. We see more hazardous waste. We see an increase in shoplifting. We see nearly the same amount of reusable bags going to the dump as plastic bags, but with a larger carbon footprint. What is more, is that in an attempt to be fair with a comprehensive ban, uh, we end up being unfair in two distinct ways. One is that plastic bags are a negligible portion of the total amount of litter, as was mentioned, even when singling out storm drains or waterways. In fact, litter surveys continuously show plastic retail bags constituting of less than one percent of total litter. Given these data, we can hardly justify a plastic bag ban without giving similar treatment to all fast-food packaging, plastic bottles, bottle caps, and other litter sources. Secondly, these types of bans disproportionately affect the poor. We expect them to buy reusable bags that need to be washed regularly. We expect them to buy bag, garbage bag liners instead of reusing the bags they bring home from the store. We expect them to buy lunch boxes instead of using these bags to transport lunches. We expect them to buy bags to throw out soiled diapers or other hazardous animal or human waste. People with little to no access to bathrooms, like the homeless, often use plastic bags to dispose of their waste. What happens to them when we ban these plastic bags? In fact, San Diego banned plastic grocery bags. The city saw an unprecedented hepatitis outbreak uh, because the homeless no longer had access to grocery, uh, to grocery bags to dispose of their excrement. So it was left on the sidewalks. So that's another problem that we have to deal with. If we are all concerned about greenhouse emissions, the data clearly suggests that plastic bags leave less of a carbon footprint than the obvious alternatives, paper bags and tote bags. Looking at their entire lifecycle, production, use, and disposal, plastic bags are better for the environment than the forced alternatives that come from a ban. A slew of studies that we, that show that we would need to use tote bags an unreasonable amount of times just to justify their environmental claims. Uh, a Danish EPA study, uh, suggests that a tote bag has to be reused twenty thousand times to equal the environmental impact of one single-use bag. Uh, cotton or canvas tote bags are not environment, uh, are not only environmentally damaging to plastic bags, they are health risks. As was mentioned, food often leaks and spills when transported from grocery stores. Uh, so these bags need to be washed regularly. Ninety-seven percent of reusable bag users never have washed their bags or bleached them. They collect tons of harmful bacteria such as E. coli and even Salmonella. That is not, uh, this is not only an obvious health issue, but also a socioeconomic issue. Washing them regularly assumes easy access-
Let me get you to wrap up here real quick.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, uh, another unintended, uh, these unintended consequences are that these, banning this plastic bag is just a coercive way of, of, of trying to, in, trying to entertain a movement that is much more sustainable when voluntary actions are taken, not forceful actions. Uh, personally, a plastic bag ban won't have any effect on me, but it'll affect disproportionately the, the poor that don't have a voice to come and, um, kind of oppose these types of bans. So I urge you, again, to, to vote no on this ordinance. Throw the ban away.
Thank you. Thank you. We're not gonna do that in the extended chamber here, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. The rules don't call for that. Thank you. Next up, Kathy Sifkin.
Good afternoon, President Gray and members of the City Council. My name is Kathy Sifkin. I'm the Executive Director of the Nebraska Grocery Industry Association. We represent grocery stores statewide, uh, here in opposition to the ordinance. As we speak, there are many things that are happening in the recycling world. Uh, I'm not sure that you are aware, or perhaps you are, that, uh, Omaha is, uh, has a very good chance of becoming the home of a pyrolysis center and, or, or plant, and that, that will happen within the next year or two. And this plant will be able to recycle approximately six thousand tons of contaminated plastic every year. We also have the orange bag, uh, that is being introduced in many communities across the state of Nebraska. Plastic bags are now being recycled into many different products, including railroad ties and, and decking and other things that, um, uh, get those bags out of the waste stream. And when you, you have those end products, they become revenue streams. And those are things that can help the communities across this entire state. In addition to that, retailers are searching for ways and developing programs that will reduce the number of bags that are in the community and will also help recycle the bags that are already out there. So what we ask, there are three things that we would like the council to consider before moving forward with any kind of a bag ban. We would, we would like your consideration of adopting Mayor Stothart's Resolution of Encouragement because it will motivate all retailers, not just some retailers, but all retailers, to reduce and recycle, as we should all be doing. We would ask that you lay this over for maybe a year or so so that we can conduct a study so that we know what the litter problems are in this community, and we know that there are litter issues. So if we're going to do something to contain the litter, let's do it in an educated manner and move forward together. Um, and the third thing that we would ask you to consider is to give the industry time to implement the programs that are already in development stages. We're asking you to not step in the way of progress. Earlier, when the council, at the beginning of the council meeting, uh, you recognized someone for being very involved in helping flood victims in Nebraska. And so in the Omaha community itself, we have grocery stores that have stepped up. Hy-Vee has given over two hundred thousand dollars to flood victims. Spartan Nash or the Family Fair people, they have given over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to flood victims.
Kathy, I'm gonna have to get you to wrap up here pretty quick.
Okay. So, so, um, um, Kroger, same thing. Across this entire state, grocers are stepping up and they're helping. My point is that we should work together. We should be on the same page. We shouldn't be getting in each other's way, and that's what this ordinance does. So I'm asking you to lay this over, and, uh, if you have any questions about anything, I'm always available.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next up is Larry Store. With Robert Fairchild and Hal Dob on deck.
Uh, do I need to give my address?
Yes, please. Name and address for the record.
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three two. I'm wowed. We've been off the topic quite a bit here today, and nobody's been interrupted and walked out. We've got OTAC, we've got college professors. We've got the global warming people.
Mr. Store, we were all talking about the bad, the bad bag.
Yeah, I'm talking about the plastic bag that, like the Omaha World Herald's not banned.
Let's stick to the bad bag.
I'm sorry. I'll buy back, back on topic, but I'm just making a point here, Mr. Gray, that there was a lot of people off topic.
No, they weren't.
Yes, there were.
No, they weren't.
Anyway, the World Herald leaves this laying on the sidewalks, maybe in the streets. It says, "Don't leave around for children." It does say it's recyclable. But they're not banned. Our children here, that, by the way, that one of the rules says that only one person at the microphone at a time. Our children is getting, are getting a good lessons today in civics. However, they don't get the whole picture. Your state constitution, I think you're beholden to-
Larry, we're, we're gonna talk about the bad bag.
Says you won't make special laws, a special law banning certain bags, sir.
Larry, we're not gonna keep doing this.
You didn't interrupt him. You didn't interrupt him.
Please, please. Thank you. We're not gonna keep doing this. I told you we're not gonna keep doing it, and we're not gonna keep doing it. Robert Fairchild is next.
My name is Robert Fairchild. I'm, I live at, uh, twenty-four twelve South Nineteenth Street in Council West, Iowa. I'm a known liberty activist, so I, uh, come here to oppose the plastic bag ban because it is anti-free market, anti-liberty, and today's plastic pollution, ninety percent of it, comes from Southeast Asia and Africa. And these countries have, don't really have trash surfaces because most of these, uh, this reg, these regions do not have free societies to maintain a free-market system in these regions. Because a lot of these regions are known for authoritarian rule in their areas, and the authoritarianists have, uh, actually no business to ban plastics, and so they're- and so they're part of the biggest problems why the oceans are still getting polluted. In Australia, there was an entrepreneur that made a Thomas boat to clean the, the local bays in Australia, uh, in the free market, eh, every time concerns have been brought up with pollution, the free markets have been willing to do, meet up that demand, because the demand is there, and they can make the supply. So the free market is determined by the supply and demand. So, um, I urge the City of Omaha Council to vote no on the plastic bag ban, and I congratulate all the young people who come out here to participate in government. So, and that is all from me, and have a nice day. You have any questions for you guys?
Thank you. Uh, Haldob.
There's nobody on the desk. Let's see if there's anybody else. Mr. President, members of the council, first of all, thank you for this opportunity to visit about an important issue that faces us as a community. I thank you for your service and sitting through, uh, I got a very educational hearing today. I learned a lot, and I learned a lot from, from, uh, the younger people who came to share their concerns and their feelings and views. Making wise and workable public policy is a big challenge, you face it every day, every one of your council meetings. And so I was reminded to try to avoid the, uh, thought of the issue being polarized on the hard right with political ideology, or the hard left with anti-oil products, special interests, to also avoid exaggerations and avoid emotions. So I thought about Dragnet, and that detective who said just the facts, and he took notes, he said just the facts. So there's no cost information about Omaha's problem with plastic bags. It's not skateboard issue, it's not a scooter issue. There's no data that shows Omaha's threat of public health or public safety from the use of plastic bags. The t-shirt bag, whatever the percentage is of recycling netted against the cost of landfill for plastic bags is an unknown idea. So what I want to just quickly say is, first of all, a lot of what you've heard on both sides today is true. A lot of what you've heard on both sides is true. But a lot of what you've heard on both sides is an exaggeration. It's not an exaggeration, though, to say that paper bags are far more expensive, and far more damaging to the environment, and far more costly to landfill, they create methane, for example, even in their, uh, long-term deterioration. When we've got covered-lidded carts, a decision you will be making shortly, when we have paralysis coming to this region in the next two years, which uses all plastics of every kind to make diesel fuel, when we have a bi-degradable tote or carry bag soon to be strong enough to eliminate this particular small millage-refined, uh, single-use bag, as it's called, for me it's a multiple-use bag, because I have lots of uses for those bags, uh, in my house, but we have a lot of things to consider. So when you exempt so many, and don't have a pre-exemption, a, a, a preemption in the state statute, like Iowa does, so you can control the surrounding communities that don't have such a limitation, so the bags will still blow if bags are a problem in terms of site and litter, and we'll still have a significant, probably more bags go into the landfill stream from the C-stores than from the stores that are the big boxes that have a responsible recycling program in place right now. So I would urge you to indefinitely postpone the consideration of this resolution, and commission a study over the next 12 months, to know exactly what the problem is before you change the habits of the stores and the poor people, the people without cars, the handicapped, um, uh, the elderly, that depend upon the use of this more convenient way of carrying things. Plastic bags are convenient, and convenience has a value, but the recycling industry knows that plastic is valuable. We don't want to bury it in the landfill. We want to reuse it, reclaim it, and reprocess it, and that's what this industry's doing, much as aluminum cans faced the same debate in our society 20 years ago, and a 360-degree program was developed for the recycling and reclaiming and reusing of aluminum. And that's what's underway with plastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I saw you just looking at me, Ben. May I put in the record?
Yes, you can.
The World Herald article?
Yes.
Which was, uh, a part of what, uh, Mr. Gomez talked about when he testified among us from the Creighton Economist.
Certainly. Is there any other opponents who did not sign in who wanted to be heard? With that, we close the public hearing. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to start by just thanking everyone for their testimony here today, both proponents and opponents. And I especially want to thank all the students that are here today, not just because you're supporting my ordinance, but because it's so great to see you engaged in the civics process and hear from me today, uh, because what I've found on this issue is that the younger generations get it. They understand we're making decisions about their future today, and they feel strongly and passionately about what we're doing today, and it's great to see you come out and express your pains to us, and it's something I greatly appreciate. I was just making a few notes about who we heard from today in that regard, and, um, I'll list them as Creighton Prep, Elkhorn South, Westside High School, Central High School, go Eagles, Duchenne, Creighton University, UNO, Mercy, and I also heard from Millard West students. So, uh, a great sampling across the city of, of those opinions. And I especially want to thank Shelley Brown, and her, and her fifth graders here from St. James. Uh, they asked me to come speak to them recently, I think that was about two weeks ago, and I learned a lot from them. They're very smart kids and did a great job here today, and they're very engaged on this issue. In fact, their whole school is engaged on a project of sustainability, recycling, and doing projects on this plastic bag issue. I also want to, uh, thank my fourth graders from Rose Hill Elementary. They sent us a bunch of nice letters today, so I wanted to make sure I recognize them as well. So Councilman Gray and I began this, this conversation over a year ago, and reached out to the Grocers Association and the Retail Federation, and the petroleum marketers also at that time. And the reason we did is similar to a lot of the testimony we heard today. Uh, we were tired of seeing all the litter around our districts and around the community, all over the community, in streams, parks, trees, vacant lots, you name it. And our thought is surely we can do a better job of addressing that, and surely this is something that is totally preventable, and we can do a better job of reducing our litter, and a better job at reducing our waste stream. We researched, we researched both fees and bans, and what other communities have done. About 350 cities now, or localities, have done something along these lines. And after speaking with the mayor, uh, we settled on an approach that went the direction of the ban approach we're talking about here today, and do feel it's easier and more straightforward than some other approaches. We felt now is the best time to address this issue, because we are talking about waste hauling. We think this is one of the same conversation when we talk about how are we handling our waste as a city, how are we handling recycling, what's that gonna look like? And my belief that in what's been proposed so far with the waste contracts, there's not much along those lines that addresses litter, or waste stream reduction, or even improvements in recycling. So to me, this is one of the same conversation, and important that we address this as well. So we started with a simple ban that was essentially food sales, as currently defined in zoning code, and that's primarily a large grocery. We thought it was a place to start, we thought it was manageable, we thought it was impactful, um, since some of the largest, they are some of the largest users of plastic bags in our community. And there are other options available in most of those stores, such as paper bags or reusable bags, which are more ideal. We do think the industry understands that, that this is where this is going, um, across the whole country, across, you might say, the world. It's consumer preference. Walner's Grocery Store, for example, I think just this week said they're going to reduce or get rid of all single-use bags by June. Costco, Trader Joe's, and Aldi's already do that. We met with Kroger, the Kroger representative was here today, and I appreciated our conversation about your attention on these matters. As she mentioned, she, they're phasing out in 2025. To me, that's, six years is a long time, but that's movement, and we appreciate all that they're doing along those lines, and in fact have already banned single-use plastic bags in their Northwest locations, so about 62 stores, and largely because they're responding to some local ordinances along these lines, but also consumer preferences, and that's what we're talking about here today. But clearly, we still have a problem here in our city. An estimated $280 million, $280 million plastic bags per year in the metro are used, and under 5% of those are recycled despite stores offering those programs. So that option is represented today on the agenda under 54A, and it's still, um, something we could consider here today. But we listened, I think, to the last public hearing we had on this issue, and the common thread between, I think, supporters and opponents that day was that we needed to make it more equitable, or as equitable as possible, and expand to similar business establishments that are offering substantial food sales and similar types of products, such as big-box stores, your Walmarts, your Targets, your CBSs, and your Walgreens. And we agree with that. And so the amendment 54B is a better approach, I think, than we first discussed last week along those lines, drafted by Mr. Kratz to address that issue. It's a simple approach. If you're a large retailer, and you're over 10,000 square feet, and if you offer or distribute, uh, single-use plastic bags that are 200-quarter mil thickness or less, this would apply to you. Why the 10,000 square feet? It is commonly used in our zoning code, but it is also a, um, a measure some other communities have used when they did this. And I think the larger stores are more, more able to accommodate this and provide options when we get this started, uh, but surely we're open to, uh, additional, uh, ways to do this as well, and additional expansion of this if others are interested too, but felt that was a good way to start. It's fair and manageable, and, um, we also responded to the, to the notion of wanting more time to adjust to this. So 54B also has a phase-in period that wouldn't start until January 1st of 2022, so two and a half years out if, if this was passed today, uh, and I think that's a pretty reasonable timeframe for anyone to accommodate. So just a few other things I wanted to address that came up during the last public hearing, since we could, did continue it today. Questions about enforcement, so, um, this would be complaint-based, like any other ordinance. Uh, one could receive a citation, like any other ordinance, a $500 fine, possibly six months in jail. I think that's adequate. Uh, I think, in fact, the best, uh, enforcement mechanism on this ordinance, should it be passed, isn't that its public perception, uh, because folks realize this is an important, um, competitive advantage, it's consumer preference, and should the city pass this, this is something I'm sure folks would, would comply with. Some have said, "Well, it's, they don't want to create a patchwork of ordinances, or communities, or cities, or localities, they'd rather have a state do it, or even the country do it." And so would I. But I don't think, uh, our state is likely to show that leadership, and I think it has worked in other communities. Some states have done it, New York and California, for example, but 350 other cities and localities have taken leadership on this and its work, and... We have an example of that here locally, too. Our anti-discrimination ordinance, we took leadership on seven years ago. That's worked well. I don't think anyone here would say that's been a mistake, and the state still hasn't acted upon that issue either. There's been suggestion we take a baseline study to measure the litter problem, or to determine, should this pass, how it is determined to be successful. And I actually agree with that, I, I think that's a good idea. My perspective on that, though, would be we have plenty of time to, to determine that. Should this pass today, because of the phase-in period in 2022, um, I'd be pleased to participate in that study. So we do have that baseline information to go from when it would go into effect, and having spoken with Keep Omaha Beautiful a little bit, I think they'd be a willing partner in that litter study. Some have said, "Well, it doesn't work, it won't work," um, and I agree with what some proponents have said, this isn't gonna address all litter, but intuitively, if there's fewer bags being offered, it certainly is gonna have a positive impact on what we're seeing in our streets and sewers and parks. And in other cities that have done this, uh, just a few examples, uh, Chicago has reduced plastic bag usage by 40%. Austin, Texas, 75% reductions in usage. The state of California reports a 72% reduction in plastic bag litter. The community of Lincoln, uh, while this is not a plastic bag, it's a card, cardboard issue, it was a cardboard ban, is also an example of how bans can work. They have reduced cardboard to their landfills by 76% by banning cardboard from those landfills. And then lastly, I wanted to address, um, a recent study that was, uh, part of a NPR program on April 9th that kind of addressed this issue, and it walked through a lot of important things we talked about here today. One of the things it observed about plastic bags and plastic bag garbage was that bans and different approaches to eliminate plastic bags in communities have no question reduced plastic bag usage in our communities, about 40 million fewer pounds of plastic trash per year, they estimated. The study did observe, though, that, um, that can be increased, um, usage of other kinds of garbage bags, or other kinds of plastic for trash, or pet waste, and some things that have been said today. That's true. Uh, that's the whole point, we need to look for other alternatives that are better, and there are, there are other alternatives, and those alternatives don't, uh, produce the litter that we're so concerned about and are trying to address in this ordinance. The, the notion that paper bags could be worse for the environment, they're not, they're more intensive to make, but they're not worse, and can be recycled, and this ordinance would stipulate, past, our paper bags have to be 100% recycled and made from 40% consumer content. And again, I don't see plast, I don't see paper bags littering our environment, um, it's the plastic bags that are doing that. And in any event, what you want to do is encourage reusable bags. Some have said, "Well, tote bags are worse." Um, that can be true, but not entirely true. Again, choice matters. If you chose a cloth bag that was really intensive to make, uh, that would require many, many more times of usage than, say, a plastic bag environmentally, but there's plenty of other bags that are reusable that aren't that way. I own ones that are, are environmentally neutral in 30 or 40 uses. That's part of the education process we're talking about here today, and that we want to encourage. And again, reusable bags don't cause litter. So the NPR study concludes, uh, "The most environmentally friendly way to carry groceries is to use the same bag over and over again." And I agree with that. So lastly, um, if I could, I want to call up, um, Chris Strattman from Keep Omaha Beautiful. I want to make it clear that Keep Omaha Beautiful does not advocate or take positions on, I think, city issues or really any public policy at this point, but, uh, their mission is very closely tied to litter reduction in our community and sustainability issues, and I know you have a lot of experience and knowledge about these type of things, so I wanted to offer you a chance to talk about what you've seen, or what your thoughts would be on this.
Yeah, so again, Chris Strattman, Executive Director of Keep Omaha Beautiful, uh, address is 2327 North 50th Avenue, Office 1819, 4th Street, 306. Um, again, yes, our Board of Directors and our organization is, just sees ourselves as an impartial resource for the City Council, Mayor's Office, um, in, obviously, in issues such as this, that do align with our specific mission. Um, in terms of what we see, I think, um, you know, we obviously, we mobilize about, anywhere from about 10,000 volunteers a year, um, doing cleanups. We, in conjunction with Parks and Rec Department, as well as public, as well as, uh, Public Works, um, anywhere from about 550 to 500 cleanups in a given, in any given year. And most of those, again, most of those volunteers are doing these types of cleanups, parks, streams, uh, trails, et cetera. And on average, I would say, we're typically seeing the majority of things, hands down, and you always see this from research, is cigarette litter usually makes up about 35% of our litter stream. Um, on average, and when you look at the research, even though there's gonna be discord in evidence on some of this, plastic bags usually will make up about 5% of our litter stream. That's across the board, especially on roadway litter, I would say anecdotally, and given our kind of not super formal audits, pa, plastic bags are usually in the top five items that we see. Again, cigarette litter, it tends to be a lot of snack or packaged, food package-type items, um, as well as obviously plastic and glass bottles, but again, plastic bags do tend to be one of the more common items that we, that volunteers pick up. Any other specific questions? Um, I mean, I can, you know, I think one of the big things, too, when I hear some of the, the research that's out there, I do applaud the, the council, as well as the Mayor's Office, in, in really looking at the holistic elements of this, not in just the litter element, but obviously the environmental benefit. And there is a lot of discord in evidence about there, when you start, start talking about LCAs or lifecycle analysis, which again, looks at the whole life spectrum of a, of a material, from the point that you extract the resources all the way till you produce it, and then ultimately what we call end-of-life management of that, it recycle, what have you. But there's all kinds of discord in evidence, it can get, it makes a big difference in terms of the assumptions and stuff that you look at. Typically, like something like a paper bag, just to help kind of clarify that, when you look at the evidence, paper bags, because we will see, if you do something such as adopt a ban on plastic bags, you will see, of course, an uptick in paper bags, as well as reusable. as reusable bags, significant changes in those. You also see, to some level, like the study that Councilmember Festerson was referring to, that you'll see an uptick in what we'd say like four-gallon bags, or eight-gallon bags, where people are using those for their trash liners and things like that. Usually, though, what I've seen, and based on the research that we've looked at, it does not offset, though, the reduction, the overall reduction that we see in plastic bags, or plastic across the board. Again, about that LCA side of things, though, and bringing it back to the paper side, paper bags can be, can be slightly more energy-intensive to produce. They definitely do undoubtedly use more water in the production of them. However, when you're looking again, the fact that 65% of paper bags are recycled, whereas 5% of plastic bags are recycled, there is some catch on that end-of-life management side. So you are, obviously, we have an infrastructure already in place with our recycling setup as it is now, where we can easily recycle those. Now, you can, again, recycle bags at most grocery stores, which is, we're very fortunate that most of our large grocery stores do this. But on that note, again, it's usually about 5% on average that we see that those bags are captured for recycling. There have been a lot of education programs aimed at improving that. I think most people would probably, obviously, support that concept. But however, respective to what we've seen in some, when you look at all the different studies out there, the education, unless it's really focused, and et cetera, you'll only see maybe another 5% to 10% uptick in something like that in terms of bags recycled. It's not to say that we couldn't potentially implement more.
Thank you. So education's important, and in your brief survey of other communities, you have found these to be effective in that regard.
The education?
Bans or fee systems are ways to address plastic.
Yeah, so there's obviously lots of approaches. There's bans, there's fees, there's hybrid approaches, there's market-based approaches. I know the Council, as well as Mayor's Office, had talked about a fee-based structure originally. But yes, we see typically, when you look at reductions in plastic bag use, a ban is going to demonstrate a significantly lower reduction, of course, in bags, right? You're removing that from the market ultimately, or a majority of the market. Whereas fee-based structures, well, they do have some significant benefit in that as well, but bans tend to show more of a reduction across the board with plastic use. And there's several cities, I mean, I'm not going to, we can go over a lot of that, but there's several cities that have shown significant reductions. And a lot of times, you'll see the biggest, candidly, the biggest benefit tends to be, what we've seen in reduction is when there's been actually a 10 cent add-on to paper bags, which drives even more reusable, reusable types of bags. But for the most part, yeah, I guess that's my final point.
Great. Thank you, I appreciate it. So with that, I'll yield the floor for now, but before I do, I want to move 54B to get that on the table.
Second. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, no matter how this comes out, I think, Mr. Festerson, you should feel good, because today I heard from students, they're stepping up, they're challenging our thinking. I heard from the business world, they're stepping up, they're challenging our thinking. So the thought process moving, and being a former educator, that's what I like, that students, you really tickle me when I hear you talking, because it brings back good old days. Speaking of the good old days, I'm going to talk a little bit, believe it or not, about smoking, tipping point, and bags. Many years ago, when I was in legislature, we wanted to do away with cigarettes, smoking in restaurants and bars. That took a number of attempts. And to be honest with you, on that, how I voted, I did lose some friends because they were really heavy smokers. I had some bar owners really just actually really mad at me that we were going to mess up their business. Now, right now, if you go to a restaurant, or those of you who do go to bars, you don't see smoking, and they're doing quite well. Because it's what I call, after a series of efforts to eliminate smoking in these establishments, eventually, we hit a tipping point, and it was passed. But it took us a number of times. And this is how I see working with bags. It may pass today, and it may stumble, but someday, some of the things that you're aspiring, it will happen. Now, whether it will happen today, because I don't know if we've hit that tipping point, we heard a lot of good discussion from both sides today. But I don't know where the community totally is. I know we take surveys, and you say you have 10,000, and all that, but there are a lot of people out there, too. There will come a time when we will hit that tipping point, and a lot of these things that we're discussing today, it's going to be a matter of life, matter of fact, I should say. I know the day will come, if not today, or in the near future, where things such as bags will not be an issue. We'll kind, we'll come up with some solution. Because the young people are going to be challenging us, and the business world is, I think they're accepting the challenge. I can remember talking from, the individual from Kroger's, saying that maybe there could even be a pilot thing. Now, I'm really pushing it there, because bakers, which is Kroger's here in the city of Omaha, maybe we could get them to work with us as a city, and the schools. That could be one of our answers. Now, that, whether we do pass a bill today, or pass the ordinance today, I think we have to look at that. And not only that, the person who represents Kroger, she happened to have gone to the same school that I did in Kansas, so she can't be all bad. I don't mean to embarrass you.
Not at the same time.
No, not at the same time. If you take a look, that's very easily understood. But I say, that tipping point, and I don't know if we're there yet. And I'm going to challenge some of the people, if you haven't read any literature on the tipping point, do so, and you'll understand what I'm talking about. And I'm finished.
Thank you. Mr., Ms. Melton.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I have to say, this might be one of the most enjoyable meetings I've sat through, and I know everybody's going, "What? Are you kidding?" You know, we're going on 6 o'clock, but the number of young people that are, that are here, and that took the time, and that stayed. So I have to say, the last time we did this, a lot of, actually, the opponents were upset at the end, because they said, "Hey, wait a minute, we sat through all of the proponents, and then they left, and they didn't hear us." So what I'm most impressed with is the fact that you've sat here and stayed. You just didn't come down and tell us what you thought, and left. I also, I have a son, he graduated from Creighton Prep last year, some of you may know him, but, by the way, he has talked to me for the last five years about the environment, and global warming, and being, to the point where sometimes I want to go, "Okay, I got somewhere to go," right? But I, the schools are really focusing on a lot of that, and I, and I think it's great. But I also think, when we do these things, we have to get them right. And sometimes what happens is, what you think sounds good, and what you say, "Oh, I can pat myself on the back because I just did something good," maybe may not be the right thing. I like what Kroger's doing, because what they're trying to figure out, and what they know is, they've decided, "Plastic bags, we want to ban." So that's good. Now, let's figure out how we do that, but what's best for the environment. And we got two issues going on here, because you've got environmental issues, but you got litter issues. And right now, we need to have more bags, like what Councilmember Festerson said, we need to have the bags that aren't creating more environmental problems. Because that's what we have right now, is a lot of people get these reusable bags, and again, think, "Oh, I'm reusing the bags," but the bags are, the making of those bags are actually a lot worse than the plastic bags. So the environmental footprint is a lot worse. We can't be, we can't actually be leaving a worse environmental footprint than what we're trying to do. Just because it may sound good, the actual effect is not. So that, I don't want to actually harm the environment more. I don't want to cut down more trees, because again, that affects the air quality. I don't want to increase the number of paper bags that we're necessarily using. So what I like is that Kroger's trying to figure it out. So how, how do we get the mom with three boys at home that can't just carry two little reusable bags into the grocery store to get all the groceries that they need for the week? You know, you need 20 bags, right? How can we get to those shoppers and be able to provide that many bags that isn't going to actually harm the environment even worse? And then with the litter, the problem is, this ordinance isn't going to necessarily help the litter, because it's banning all the bags from the big box stores that are more than 10,000 square feet. But those bags typically come home. When I go to the grocery store, and I'm carrying all my groceries in, those bags are going back in my kitchen and going underneath the sink. Now, by not banning the bags in the convenience stores, and even your fast-food stores, those are the ones that people typically are coming out and then throw, you know, walking down the street and throwing them out. We have a litter problem that this is not necessarily going to fix. And also, whether it passes or doesn't pass, there's lots of things that we still need to do. When we walk out of here today, all of us in here, and all of you students, we need to start doing something now, and really helping with the education piece. How many kids know that you, you know, encourage their parents to buy the orange hefty bags? How many people are just throwing stuff away that can't go in the recycle bin? But it could go in the orange hefty bag and be used for renewable, the biofuels, and it could, that can actually be recycled, even though it doesn't go in your recycle bin. So there's all these things that we need to do. We can't just ban plastic bags and things, and we've solved a big problem. Because we have a lot of other problems that we need to solve, and the litter problem is significant, and people throwing things out. And I liked, somebody mentioned increasing fines on littering, and I think that might be something we want to address, too. It's always good to educate first, but if that doesn't work, sometimes you got to go with increased punishment. So what I would like to see is how Kroger is doing this in other areas, they're stating that they need until 2025. I mean, they've got this program going, they're putting a lot, they're putting a significant amount of time and money and effort into this program, so I would guess they really care about the right rollout. So I guess my opinion is, what I would like to see is a resolution by the Council, saying this is going to be our intent. I don't know that we have to do our own study, but I do think we need to put some money into litter education. We should talk about that in our next budget. I won't, I won't get off-topic, Mr. President, but I think that there is something that we have an industry doing, and the Grocers Association is working on that, and they're actually doing that, so there may be a better way, and there may be better language that we can put in this ordinance. So that, that's what I'm offering up today. Think there's a problem, I think everybody in the room agrees we need to fix the problem. And how we go about getting there, though, I don't think we're quite there yet, but there are things that we can start doing tomorrow. Because even if this passes, it's not going to go into effect until 2022 anyway. So let's get that education piece out there, and thank you to the teacher from St. James for helping do that and bringing those students down, and thank you to the students from St. James, 5th grade. I have a 6th grader, I don't think he could have sat through this entire meeting and been as good, so hats off to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hardy.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm going to pick up on one thing you were talking about, Councilmember Melton, at the beginning here, and then go on to my comments. But in addition to maybe increasing the fines, if we get to that point, we also need to make sure we increase enforcement. Because just by having it on the books and not enforcing it, it's, you know, you don't solve the problem that way. So, I, okay, it was my former boss said something today that I thought was, it caught, it caught my ear. And it was a good admission, too. A lot of what we have heard today from both sides is true, and that's exactly right. Both sides have a legitimate concern and a legitimate argument, and I think we all, and I said this at pre-council today, we're, it's not like some of us are for littering, or for making the earth a dirtier place to be. We all have the same goal in mind. We might just have different ways to approach it, or different, different solutions at the end of the day. And so, taking, taking that statement about what we've, some of what we've heard from, or much of what we've heard from both sides is true. Again, I think that the education is going to be a large component of whatever the solution is, is eventually might be. And I also, I also understand that really what we're, we have two issues here that we're trying to address, maybe with, with one solution. And I'm not sure that's the best way to get to the end of the line. And those two issues have to do with, with litter, and then maybe the long-term impact of what a plastic bag might do to the environment. And so it was asked earlier today, too, about, you know, what, what happens if we get to, or what will, what will be accepted when we get to the, having a better biodegradable bag? And I think that certainly would address one of the concerns that has been brought up today about the impact of the, on the environment, having a biodegradable bag versus what we currently have today. As a quick aside, I learned in some of, what I've been told in the investigations I've done, is that I've always thought that it was because it was more brittle, that the soy-based or corn-based bag was more brittle, and that's why it wasn't really used in stores very often. What I, what I think I've learned is it's actually kind of a lower melting point. And I think that in some markets, you have to deliver those bags in a refrigerated truck to get it to the stores that are using it, which, you know, if you think about the impact to the environment of having to put, you know, those semis on the road with the, with the refrigerated trucks, I just, I'm not sure you're really accomplishing the end goal that you set out at the beginning. But, so back to the point of the, a better biodegradable bag, as technology improves, would that be acceptable? And I think, at least according to this ordinance, I've been told that it's, it's not. So again, if we're, it looks like we're trying to address two issues with one solution, and I think we need to keep that door open for those improvements in technology that might get us to a better biodegradable bag. And again, I think that's where the issue of time then comes into the equation, and knowing what Kroger's doing nationally, as well as what they've said that they would be doing here, I think we have an opportunity to help, or an opportunity to, to commit to, to a timeline that makes sense for not only the consumer, but also for, for the retailers So, oh, I know, the, the other thing I was going to mention, too, is I agree with, with Councilmembers Gray and Festerson, that this is an opportune time, or the correct time to bring this issue up as well. Because when we're in conjunction with the new garbage contract, I mean, it's, when I campaigned, I talked a lot about, you know, garbage day shouldn't be the day after, after the waste management's been through my neighborhood to pick up the garbage. Because what we have is, we have recyclable containers that don't have lids on it. And I think a lot of, not a lot, but, but much of what might be part of the issue is blown out of, you know, because we have windy days here in Nebraska, and, and those come out of the recycle bins that don't have lids on them. And as we get to a new contract, and having lidded containers for recyclables, I think that will help, in some part, address the issue. Again, we're, we've got two issues and one solution. So in the end, I, you know, I agree, I think, I'd love to be able to kind of sit down and get more of the stakeholders all together, and figure out a long-term solution that fits everyone, that includes retailers under 10,000 feet, that includes the bags that my dry cleaning might come back in, that includes the newspaper I get every morning, and I hope we'll still have newspapers here to get in the morning, the bag that those come in. I think, I think we need to take kind of a longer-range, more comprehensive approach to solving both issues, and not with one solution. And then my last point, I guess I talked a little bit about education, which, which I think is really going to be an important component of this. And, you know, I'm going to marry kind of two, two quotes together from an American author, Norman Augustine, and Martin Luther King. And it goes, it will go something like this now, it's, again, it's kind of confused together. "One cannot legislate problems out of existence." That part comes from Augustine, and the part that comes from Martin Luther King, when he was talking about you can't legislate morality, and the last part of that is, "You have to change the heart first." And so we have to change the way we do things. And that, it's, it's hard to legislate that, but we have What we have to do is find a solution that educates us and, and compels us to go in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, after Mr. Palermo and Mr. Durham, I have a few comments I want to make, so. Mr. Palermo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I, too, want to thank everyone who stuck around, obviously. With the amount of people that are still here, it shows your involvement on, regardless of what side you're on, and, and you know, it's like any other thing, you could do a quick Google search on a plastic bag ban, and regardless of what side you're on, you're going to be focused of why this is good, or why this is bad. But regardless, I promise you, whatever happens today, it's possible to live through it. Okay? We're, we're going to wake up tomorrow, and whatever year this, if it gets passed today, decides to kick in, I promise you Omaha will still be open for business. That's one thing you have to keep in mind. You're going to live through this. And you've heard it time and time again, now this is no different than any other ordinance that we, we partake. Education's going to be the key. Let me say that again, education's going to be the key. Heard comments from, I believe it was a proponent who said, regardless of the outcome, we're going to be back. Well, it reminds me of when we were sitting in pre-council, we just didn't start talking about this a few weeks ago at first reading. A couple of the council members who've been actively pursuing this, it's been going on before I was even elected. We're talking years back. So this isn't nothing new. And again, depending on what side you're on, you, there's the proponents and opponents, and I appreciate both sides, but there's one important part to this, and it's when, at least in my life, when I walk my elementary kid to school, and the conversation is, "Hey, Dad, look at all them bags in the trees." Okay, well, let's talk about something else. Or if we ride our bikes to an event in the neighborhood, "Hey Dad, look at that bag in the tree, don't it look like such and such animal?" Okay, regardless of the technicalities of if this is good for the environment or bad for the environment, you can't dismiss the fact of the litter you're seeing right in front of you. And that's truly what we need to try to change. So I won't belabor this anymore, I know we still have a couple people to hear from. I'll just say that when you hear the future speak about the changes that need to be made, keep in mind, we're not going to be here forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Festerson and you for your efforts over the last almost three years on this. And I relayed this morning, I was in the mayor's office with you, I believe, the day of or the day after, really close in time to when you, you two first had a proposal that was a fee-based, plastic bag proposal, and the mayor shared her desire that we not have a fee-based structure, rather that, that she felt favorable towards a ban. And I said it was so nice to hear words from her that would mean we could work together on something. And I remember leaving there with the exuberance that it would be a nice, nice project to do together. And since then, it's been almost three years, and there was no call for a study until about a week or so ago. There was no study for a resolution, or call for a study for resolution, till about the same time. And what I'm hearing from my constituents, an overwhelming numbers, not even close, people are contacting me across the spectrum, young and old, progressive to conservative, regardless of party, that they want me to act now, not to wait, to say, "When you had a chance to step up and do something," even though they acknowledge it's a first step. It's not an all-out ban, it's a first step incrementally to dealing with a, a problem to our environment, to our air quality, our water quality, to our food stream, to any number of things. You know, these bags wreak havoc on our environment, and they don't ever go away, they just become a toxin that gets deposited somewhere. And there's so few of them that are recycled, the city doesn't collect these single-use bags for recycling, they're not accepted. If you throw them in the, in the, in the green bin, they're not getting put in the So I applaud the efforts of the grocery store industry to collect these single-use bags and what they're doing to date. But to me, my constituents want me to act now. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the mercy monarch here today, because that's where my two daughters went. And it's good to see that, that you're speaking on behalf of your school, and you took the time, and you're, you were very articulate and professional, like so many of the other students who came here today. And as Councilmember Melton said, the staying power of the, of the, the community today for this debate is, bravo, bravo. Because it's an important issue, and it's, to me and my constituents, it's an important first step that we take now. And that's why I'm going to be supporting this. And I agree with Councilmember Festerson when he says that the amendment of the whole item B gives more time for the industry to adapt, which they've requested, might be a little bit faster than Kroger wants to come on board, but I think it's important. And, you know, I want to keep going to Hy-Vee. Hy-Vee's right down the street from my house to the west, Bakers is down the street to the north, but, you know, Trader Joe's and Aldi's are in between my office and my house. And I see that they can do it. I can see they've figured it out. I've seen that the, the customers there have figured it out. I know my wife puts the reusable bags in my car, they're in all our vehicles, so that when we go, or when she goes, even when she goes by foot, she brings them. So I'm looking forward to this, I hope the mayor does not veto it, I hope she sticks with what she first said. Because as a nurse, working in public health, who's married to someone, who's a medical doctor in public health, who has a son with a PhD researcher in public health, I know she gets it. And I know her instinct, when she told me, and she told the press, and it was reported, that the ban was something she would support, that she knew it was the right thing to do at the right time. And I hope that that's what she does here.
Thank you. My comments, I'm going to try and keep them as, as brief as possible, but let me, let me say a couple of things here. First of all, I'm not seeing this as two issues. I see, I'm hoping that we have an effect on litter with this ban, I hope we have an effect on litter. But my concern has more to do with the plastic that these fish eat, that some of these other animals eat, that we turn around and consume. People want to talk about, and they want to speak for the poor, and those who are, who are, who are disenfranchised. Well, a lot of them live in my district, and I understand what most of us try to eat. And most of the time when we try to eat, we'll eat catfish, which is not good for us, and it's in our lakes and rivers here, we catch it and eat it. They eat plastic bags. We don't know what that's going to do later on to our systems. So while I, while I appreciate the argument for litter, my objective has little, has, I'm hoping that we can address litter, but we have to address right now the problem of these, and we know people that'll go to all of these seafood restaurants, and all of them will eat like crazy, I know I do, and we're not, we don't have any even a close idea what we're consuming, and what they have consumed. And we know that we're in a crisis as it relates to our oceans and some of our streams. We already know that. We already know that there are animals that eat this product, or in some other ways ingest this product, that in turn, we eat. And so my reasoning for this has to do with you all more than it does me, because it's you all's future. But we got to do something right now to address our future. And the way to address that, in my judgment, now, we can all disagree, but the way to address it in my judgment, is right now, we have a situation where we don't know what is in, what is contained in some of the food sources that we eat. That has to be of critical importance now. And it's time for those of us who call ourselves leaders to lead. And we lead by saying, "Okay, this is not, this is not the, the, the best first option, but it is a first step, and it does address getting rid of some of those toxic plastic bags that end up in our rivers, our lakes, and our streams." And for those reasons, I have supported this, and my arguments have more to do with the toxicity in the food that we eat than it does with the litter. Although I hope that we're going to address litter as well by doing this. But I intend to support this. We, as a society, sometimes get ourselves in a situation where we're crisis-oriented, and we wait till the crisis happens, and then we try to fix it. We're ahead of it now, to a certain extent, but not by much. And if we can, if we continue to delay and delay and delay, it will be a crisis. And then we'll be sitting here talking about, "Why didn't we do something when we had the chance?" I'm supporting this today, and I hope we move forward. And I agree with you, Mr. Vice President, I hope the mayor does not veto this, but it still should not stop us from moving forward. We are in a crisis, whether we want to accept it or not. And what we do today, right now, to me, it's already too late. Let's get something done today. Is there a motion?
There's a motion in second to approve item 54, there are no lights, roll call. For 54B, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The amendment of the whole for 54 is approved, four to three.
Next item.
Item 55, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on certain lots, parts of lots, and pieces of real estate to cover the cost of clearing snow and ice from sidewalks, group number 201801, is an amendment of the whole requested by the Public Works Department.
Is there a motion? This was Pat, this was.
So moved.
Moving in second to approve item number 55, there are no lights, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The amendment of the whole for number, item 55 is approved, seven to zero. Item 56, an ordinance approving a redevelopment and tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with M.L. Construction and Design LLC to implement the Midtown Hotel at 71st and Haskell Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3301 South 72nd Street in an amount up to $3,038,797.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 56 is today, proponents, please.
Oh, yeah, Don Featon, Omaha City Planning, available for any questions.
Happy to answer the questions, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish? Oh, it's, we're getting crazy. Is there any opponents to be heard? Seeing that public hearings closed, next item.
Non-action items. Items 57 through 75 do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for a public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned, or, motion is approved, seven to zero, meeting is adjourned at 6:03.